Sorry, it was miscounted. Okay. Hello, everybody. I would like to call the Concord Carlisle School Committee to order.
I will call the Concord School Committee meeting to order.
And we have a quorum and just for the minutes, Erin, Cynthia, Sharon, Court, Alexa, and I are all here. So anyone want to make a motion to put us into executive session?
I move that the Concord School Committee and the Concord Carlisle School Committee enter into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the maintenance and secretaries unions and return to open session at 6:00 P. M.
And do we have a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we will be back at six o'clock. So, okay, we are back. It is 6:03 and just for the minutes, Erin.
Morning in progress.
Sorry. Everyone is present. Mingos is here, Ayesha is not, and Kristen Anderson is at home on Zoom. All right, so at this point, we are going to open the public hearing. Just pulling up my agenda. And I will turn it over to Dr. Hunter and our public hearing is on school choice tonight.
Right, thank you. So this is the annual public hearing on school choice by Massachusetts statute. We have to review this annually to for the committee to weigh in on whether they're going to participate in school choice and welcome students from other districts into our schools. We, in my time, have never been able to participate because of the lack of capacity. Current enrollment is very close to the school building capacities, and we struggle with any transportation availability of kids to be able to access our schools. So between those two, we have not been a school choice district in, I don't know how long, but long time standing. So you would need tonight, based on any public comment, which I don't know if you're going to get any, but listen to that comment and then decide if you wish to participate for the 2324 school year or not, and you actually have a vote on the agenda to make that decision.
Okay, so at this point, I would open up to public comment on school choice. I do not see any in the room. Let me just look online. I do not see any public comment for school choice online. All right, so it looks like we are ready to take a vote.
Should we close the hearing?
Close the hearing. Do we have to close the hearing first? I will close the hearing and we'll vote later on in the meeting. Thank you very much. Haven't done a
The vote is on now if you want to do it.
On now?
Right now.
Okay. Oh, it is on right now. They told me to close the hearing. It's very confusing. I'm getting mixed signals here. Okay, so let's do the vote. And if anyone has the motion in front of them, I have it. Go ahead. I move that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote to not participate in school choice for the school year of 2023, 2024. And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. And let's see if our students are on Zoom. It looks like they are. I see Harry and Felicity, and I don't see Zaria.
Yeah, Zaria unfortunately had something else come up tonight, so she's not going to be here, but Felicity and I have the presentation put together.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, I'll share my screen. Perfect. Can you guys see that?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Um, yeah, Felicity, do you want to get started?
Yeah, sure. So we talked about this a little bit last time, but the, we had the multicultural food festival at CCHS. I think two Wednesdays ago or one, yeah, but on 3/15, and that was a huge success. There were lots and lots of people, and you can see Harry has a photo in the top right there. So it was really great. Lots of people were there.
Yeah, and then also this past Saturday, we had the radio station's WIQH Fest, which is back for the first time since before COVID. You can see a picture of it down at the bottom. There were a lot of great groups performing. It was a really great time. So it's very exciting that that's back, and I think people really enjoyed that.
Yeah, and sophomores have the ELAMcast today and tomorrow, so my brain's a little bit fried from a morning of writing essays. And we have that another day tomorrow, but yeah, we have like a temporary different like block schedule, but I think so far everyone's managing pretty well and that'll, it'll be back to normal after tomorrow.
Yeah, and then also Class Government is hosting the annual hypnotist show this Friday. I actually signed up to get hypnotized, so not sure if it's going to work on me, but I'm excited to try that out, see what happens. It's always fun to watch, even if you're not like actually the one being hypnotized.
Also this weekend, well, on Friday and this weekend, the CCHS Performing Arts Ensembles will be intending the, attending the MICA Festival. So that's like a competition and it's always really nice, lots of great experience because I think we get to talk to like panels of, the panels of judges who also judge us. So that'll be very fun.
Yeah, and then also at our last update, we talked about how spring sports are going to be started. So we're on week two right now. Everyone is off to a great start. The lacrosse teams had scrimmages today, so things are moving along nicely, and the first games and meets are going to be next week, so it's exciting.
And Student Senate is also running the biannual blood drive this Thursday, so we already have like almost all of our slots filled up, which is very exciting.
Yeah.
That's great.
Report. Lots of great activities.
And do you have any info on prom? Proms coming up in May?
Yes, May 20th, I think. Um, yeah, like ticket sales haven't started yet, but we've got stuff I'm saying that's on the horizon for a lot of people.
Great, great. I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the blood drive open to the community or is that just for students?
I can take this. It's not, no. It's just open to students and faculty. It's just the way we run it, like so much of the registration happens in school that we do kind of have to limit it.
Yeah, that's awesome that it's so successful. And I think it's usually, it's usually full, Harry, right? Like, I mean, all slots are taken by students and faculty?
Definitely, yeah. We hit a waitlist, I think, in the fall.
Yeah, and is there an age requirement? Do you know? Should it be 16 or?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, there's an age and weight requirement. It's through the Red Cross, so they help to kind of run some of that part of it.
Great. Anyone else have any questions for our reps?
Best of luck this, this weekend with MICA. My best wishes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Harry, we think you're very brave.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll see what happens.
We're looking forward to see what happens, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Have fun with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and you guys know that our next meeting is in Boston. I think you're still on, so you can either come, we're going to bring the owl if you want to come and Zoom, or you can come in person, either one, but I know that Harry, you're definitely involved in track, so I'm not sure if you'll get there on time, so probably Zoom.
Yeah, it might be a little bit easier.
Yep.
But we'll figure that out for sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both.
Have a great night.
All right, and we will move on to public comment. Our public comment period will be a period of 20 minutes, and as a reminder, this is meeting in the public, not with the public, so we will not comment on any of your comments. So if you're in the room and you would like to speak, you would submit a blue form, which I have one, and we will start in the room and then go online, and you will have three minutes. So I will start with Kristen Haggerty.
Kristen Haggerty, 95 Revolutionary Road. I have three different points. Hopefully, they're timely enough. I missed a meeting. Last Tuesday, the 21st, was Metco Advocacy Day. There was a number of folks from Concord who went, but in particular, there are, there were two students, two seniors from CCHS who were both invited to give speeches to the legislators and everyone there. I encourage you to invite them to give their speeches. They were very, you know, concise, but very powerful and moving, so perhaps as a student update, you could have them come. In particular, Autumn Mandanka said in one of her things, and I don't want to plagiarize the whole thing, she said, "I believe Metco has helped me find a voice in a place I felt unseen for most of my academic career." And so they both spoke to the importance of their work in advocacy. The second thing, I have comments for the incident reporting form. If that's not too late, I heard the discussion that happened, all of that was very relevant. In particular, I think the part that I didn't hear as much about is what kind of education that could be done to make sure that it's not, that talks about why a reporting system, why collecting information, why, you know, going, going through this would be important to all students, teachers, and staff? Why is this going to make our community a better place? How is this going to improve the environment so that it doesn't become just kind of a a snitching thing, I guess? In terms of inclusion, I, it wasn't clear to me. I saw the list of people who are on Andrew's DEIB committee, and it did not look like a lot of the Boston families who we saw here a year ago, kind of bringing their concerns forward, and I want to know how we are specifically reaching out to kind of vet the work that's being done on both the forum and the system, and wondered if we are getting feedback from Doctors Warnum and Blake, the consultants who suggested something like this. Specifics about the form that you guys discussed and that I would certainly support is rather than making them check off a box that says this, "I've already talked to a teacher," and I know you guys addressed that that might be an obstacle, is maybe asking a dropdown to say what methods have been, have you done to address this issue, if any, and then kind of list those so that it's not like a blocker that they have to do something before they submit the form. Additionally, maybe asking what type of resolution you're hoping for to Sharon's point about, you know, is it important to capture how they felt? Maybe we can say what would be a satisfactory resolution. And I did appreciate the discussion of sharing the aggregated data with the communities so you can kind of look at trends. And finally, on that, most importantly, how is the person who's going to be investigating the bias motivated incidents, which sounds like are usually the principals or the designees, how are they going to be trained on screening and investigating?
I think your time is up, so if you can just wrap it up, sorry.
The last thing I was going to mention was about the strategic plan and inclusive culture, and that I encourage you to particularly about increase the number of diverse faculty and staff to specify the type of diversity you are prioritizing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go online, and it looks like Charlie Parker has a hand raised.
Hi, thank you for recognizing me. I have three, three comments on the capital planning process versus on Elcott School. I want to thank you for the study of the alternatives to the boiler replacement. You did what we asked you to do, and I think the results are promising. I thought that review that we had a week or so ago was, was excellent. Second, I would like to see us take the next step with Weston and Sampson and dig into the specifics on the water source heat pump option. More discussion and work is requiring, is required to get our arms around this. It's promising, but, but not necessarily fully proven. Third, I would hope that funding will be available for, for this follow through, through an engineering process, and I hope that we can get started shortly on this work, either through Weston and Sampson or someone else. Excuse me, I, on Ripley, I was going to make a few comments. There's been a lot of discussion about a plan that is no longer in the, in the current capital request, but I, I want to make a few comments here. I wanted to thank the school administration for responding to my request for information on Ripley. I think the $1.2 million plan for the pods needs a serious review of its fundamentals. Most importantly, the four 1957 California-style buildings, which are the pods, need to be evaluated before we go primetime with a plan for new mechanicals. The current sizing of the heat pumps seems extreme and may reflect sentiment that these pods have efficiency issues with both insulation and air sealing. And it might make sense to consider reducing the amount of glass and to improve the glazing. On an overall basis, these pods appear to be inefficient against average construction standards. And I make that observation simply by looking at the sizing of the, of the heat pumps that are part of the proposal. They're quite large for the, for the size of the, of the classrooms. Net, let's take the conventional approach and calculate heat loss and do a blower door test. Building efficiency issues need to be addressed before we complete plans for a major HVAC renovation. Once the efficiency issues are addressed, the HVAC solution will look a lot different. Last, on the revised capital, revised capital plan that, that was submitted, I was pleased to see the $100,000 line item in the plan for a review and assessment of existing conditions across all the schools. We need to understand the expected longevity of these schools and our long-term capital needs as costs are rising dramatically. Establishing priorities requires a high-level view that can be shared with the town as a whole. This is where we need to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and any other public comment? Okay, having seen none, I will move on, and we're going to actually skip down. The thorough course is coming at 6:30. We're going to keep going down on our agenda until they get here because we're a little bit ahead of schedule. So we will move on to reading of the minutes, and you should have received the minutes from Erin from February 7th and February 13th. Today, anyone have any comments or changes on those or edits?
Minor, minor one on Feb. 8. Hate to be booth-centric here, but it refers to me on page. Mr. Booth stated that the responsibilities seem very extraordinarily wide. I think I might have said very or extraordinarily, but probably not both.
Probably not both, so we will ask.
I like the emphasis, I guess. And then I think more importantly than that, you know, I, I hope we learn more about that new position soon because of the, the broad focus being laid upon that new position. Thank you.
Okay, so the change, how if we just go to extraordinary?
Sure.
Does that sound good? So Erin, if you could make the change to extraordinary on the minutes from February 7th, and if we can vote and accept it with that change, does that make sense?
Dropping the word very, keeping extraordinarily. Okay.
Dropping very, keeping extraordinarily.
Thank you.
All right, so I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of February 7th and February 13th.
So moved.
And my reference was an error. I said Feb. 8. It was Feb. 28, Tracy, I'm sorry.
Wait, February 7th minutes?
Then, never mind. Okay.
Okay, Erin, Erin, the group changes to the minutes.
Okay.
That, that was from March 28.
Minutes today.
Yeah.
So no changes on.
No change. Okay, so I want to go back. No changes to the February 7th and February 13th minutes.
Move to accept.
Second, thank you. Any more discussion? Nope. Thank you, Erin, for those. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, correspondence, and I believe we only had one piece of correspondence from, to both Concord and Concord Carlisle. Would you like to take that one?
Sure, sure. We had, well, we've had a couple. So one, we had an email that was to both about a perceived ethics violation that was addressed. We had a correction to a statement I made about the Concord Integrated Preschool. Nancy McGregor emailed us on that. And then additionally, since our February or our March 14th meeting, we were CC'd on about 50 or so emails supporting the CPS budget. I think that was it.
Yes, so it was mostly at Concord, I would have to say. So the reason it was just that one that yes, relatively quiet. All right, and then on to chairs, liaison and superintendent's report. So Alexa and I will start. We just have a few things that have been happening this month. We had another chairs roundtable, which is with the chairs from Belmont, Lincoln Sudbury, Lincoln Sudbury, Acton, Bedford. I don't want to leave somebody else.
Weston.
Weston.
Acton wouldn't come. Wayland didn't come.
Yeah, but they're all invited. Carlisle. Carlisle.
Those guys.
And it's actually been really helpful. It's been productive. We now have a shared drive amongst those school committees too, where we can all contribute. So people have been contributing budget presentations and, you know, agendas and, you know, how everything's happening in other towns, so we're really focusing on kind of best practices of, you know, what we can all do together. It's been a great support for all of us. I think the common theme has been that budgets have been particularly challenging this year for all of us. We've learned about negotiations in other towns that have been challenging, so it's been really helpful to just kind of move on. Dorothy came to our first one. She's invited to all of them. She did not come to this last one, and I were hoping to schedule one more before the end of the year, probably, I would say, May, because April seems really short with a vacation week. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, just again, that it's, it's, it's great. It's great to hear two things. One, I think it's particularly validating because it seems like all of, as Tracy said, the themes are quite universal. So that aspect, I think, is great. And then the second thing is that we all do things a little bit differently, and we've all been able to learn from each other. There, and, and again, I think that helps make all of these collective committees in our area better and hopefully, and including ours. So yeah, all in all, I think it's been a good success, and, and it's been the universal sentiment among the chairs. I think one chair might have even said, "If I'm not chair, I keep coming." This has been so helpful, so.
And he, he also said to keep, he, I believe he's not even going to be on a school committee. He's like, but I would love to really just keep coming and really, no, it's, it's, he's actually been really helpful, so it's been nice to kind of reach across to Carlisle too. Then we did go to the chairs breakfast in Concord, and, and actually Jack gave, you know, we were like kind of education corner there, all sitting together, so it, so it was really great. So I think that that's been really a positive for all of us. And then, let's think about anything else. I didn't really, you didn't have anything else. Did you have anything else?
I didn't. I got, we could do a quick
We can, we can do our quick, our goals, but Sarah was going to report on our new member onboarding group.
So mostly, we've been chipping away at the manual of what's, and one of the things we're struggling with really is how do people like to access information, right? And what, what did you think about sort of the onboarding process or just about anything about the manual, how we operate, how it relates to how we operate and all that stuff? So we are seeking feedback. If anybody wants to get in touch with me and just share thoughts on, you know, some people like links, some people want to paper, a printed out version of things, and we're trying to figure out what, what makes everybody happy, and maybe what are the questions to ask at the beginning, because every group dynamic is going to be different, right? Maybe some years you have seven people, nine people, whatever, who want to have paper, right? And some years instead only two want the paper and seven are like, I like the links, right? And so we're just trying to figure out what, what, how people want information, and what are your thoughts on what would, what would have been extra helpful or what was a hindrance or what, you know, would make you use it?
Yeah.
Yeah, what would compel you to access it, I think, is really the question.
Yeah.
It does seem like such a dump.
Yeah, yeah.
It can be overwhelming. What would make it less overwhelming?
And possibly there is no way to make it less.
There might not be any information, right?
But we're hoping that maybe with collective group thing.
Brain power.
Right, so we can't unfortunately work on a document together because that violates open meeting laws, but if you talk to me, I can listen, I can take notes, and then we can discuss it at our next meeting.
Yeah. Do we have a next meeting scheduled?
We don't have a next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So
We'll do it sometime in May.
May.
May, yeah.
April seems short.
Is this the manual that Cynthia, you originally pulled together?
Yeah. Thank you. I stole a lot of it from other districts.
Well, and so what we've done is we've looked at other districts and some of the other districts we've been joining with. They've put their manuals into the drive, so it's, they all kind of read the same.
Yes.
They have a lot of the same things in them, so it's not really stealing. It's really collaborating with other districts is what we're doing.
Correct.
Right, and so the
Not re-inventing the wheel when it's unnecessary.
The one thing, when are you hoping to have it done?
Oh, oh.
It's a work
Ever.
Yeah, I think it's really a work, and it's, yeah, actually a work
It's never done.
Yeah, right.
Never done.
But like a version to use with a new
Form because
Yeah.
It, it should be a living document.
Yeah.
Well, the first understanding is you date stamp it.
Yeah. Yes. Well, and I think that the last manual that Cynthia worked on, I think it said like approved on, and then there's like a line. So I'm not really sure if there was actually a date that it was approved or not.
It was five minutes.
Right, it was approved. So, but it was just, it's interesting just when you look at it, and then when you said that Carlisle is always in draft form.
I think we're always in draft.
The one thing, the one addition that Alexa brought to, it was like a 30, 60, 90, like what to do in your first 36, 30 days of being on a school committee? What to do in your first 60?
Made up.
I know, but I liked that. But it's helpful because then you know that, okay, I would have been with the chairs and with the superintendent. We did tours of the high school, you know, we did like different things like that, that I think is helpful to somebody new coming on, because we will
That was just how like I could intellect, like digestible again, make it accessible, like, you'll think about this.
Yeah.
Till days 60 through 90, I don't know, but
But I always go back to that thing that Dor, when we had Dorothy and Glenn here, right? And like, how long does it take to get up to speed as a school committee member, right? You ask Dorothy, and she says it's three months, and you ask Glenn, and he says it's three years.
Yeah.
So I still feel like I'm getting up to speed. I think, I think that's a challenge with this document, right? It's the same, it's the same thing like anytime you do a survey, right? How would you rather get emails, community, right? Or would you like emails? Do you want text messages? Do you want one big email with everything? Do you want bite-sized ones? And you ask 100 people and you will get 100 different ideas of what everybody likes. So trying to make a nice accessible mix of options.
Okay. The one other thing is school committee coffee. So we've had, I think, two school committee coffees so far. I will ask the Fowler Coffee people to maybe report on their coffee, and then, did you go to Fowler? You went to Fowler.
Or I.
We can do that.
Yeah, go ahead.
We had extra coffee.
Okay, great.
Okay, spilled a bunch of it, so.
Very true.
We, we had a very small turnout, but people who were, you know, very keen on conversing with us, hearing from us, were there, you know, essential takeaways to bring back here? I don't think so. And I don't mean that in a negative kind of way. It was more of a dialogue that we had
Right.
Other than, rather than getting advice or recommendations. Is that be accurate?
Yeah, it was a good conversation.
Yeah, so we were grateful. People we've seen before and some people that we haven't seen before, which was great.
Great, great. This weekend, Sharon, Alexa, Ayesha and I, we went to Boston, and we had one person come to our coffee, and, and it was actually great. Like, we had a great morning together. So we were at the Panera, and, you know, we did a lot of parent-to-parent stuff, I think that was really helpful. So we had a great coffee, and then we have two more coffees to go, and Carrie is looking for, yeah, maybe additional members to come. Sarah, you're currently solo in Carlisle, so I don't know if anybody wants, oh, you're, you're going to do Carlisle too? Okay, great.
Across the border.
Perfect. And then we have
Your passport.
What's the, oh, we have space for our Carlisle member at the, at the main library. We have two Concord members, so if you go, it's optional. If you, either of you would like to go, that's, you can, but
They continue with the low turnout. I felt like almost it was probably overwhelming for one
Now.
Coffee participant. We were outnumbering her four to one, so.
So the Carlisle
Two might be the match.
The Concord, the next Concord one is one. Let me pull up the
Rockfall Coffees better attended. I believe they were.
They were a little bit better.
I'm wondering if Fall is the sweet.
Oh, yeah, Karen and I went to one and no one came. It was really exciting.
Yeah, my reports in a minute, but I did two last week, and I had zero people at one, and I had two people at the second one. So it's just still
It's a good thing.
Thing in a lot of ways, but it's the same pattern, so.
We can make the argument that if we do too many, the people will disappear, but we could make a counterargument, which is if we keep doing them, it'll start to arrive on the sort of cultural landscape of the district, and people will be more inclined to come. We don't know yet, so we might as well
Don't know.
Might as well keep, keep working.
Keep offering. Concord is Wednesday, April 5th at 6:00, Main Library. Okay, great.
Ready for the kids.
Are we ready for the kids?
Yeah, they're all good.
Yes, I think we are, we are going to stop here. We'll come back to our reports, but we are going to welcome in the thorough chorus, and I believe we're going to have a presentation. I think I think they're ready.
Brought my camera for this one.
Well, that's a real.
If you're watching at home, we're just gonna take a minute to get the students in. And I can see their principal, Ms. Charles is with us. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having them. This is very exciting.
Wow, welcome. I know, we'll see. I should tell the parents that are entering the room that you'll be able to see this on TV. So with Minute Man Media, your, your child will be on TV. It will be posted probably in the next few days. Hi, welcome.
Actually got a bus.
Feel free to sit and relax and enjoy the show. I'm not sure where.
Kayla, now we're ready to be. I'll go find the kids.
Okay. All right. Oh, here they go. Oh, they're coming in.
There you go.
Perfect.
Hi. Where should we?
That boy in the middle somewhere.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome. Maybe they can like arch around.
Yeah.
Yeah, there she is.
All the way down.
There she is.
I hate it.
Surrounded with song.
So they're off camera. That's the only one. They're all off camera. There we go. Good shot. The money shot.
So for our viewers at home, we're welcoming the Thoreau chorus and do you want to grab a microphone just so that people at home can hear you? That would be great. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so. This is, I think it's on. Yes. So we are the Thoreau fourth and fifth grade chorus. My name is Kayla McLaughlin. I'm the music teacher at Thoreau and the choir director now as well. We're so excited to be sharing this program with you. We've got three songs. And I'm gonna turn it over to the students to announce our songs for today. So.
Good evening. My name is Nafemi and I'm in fifth grade. Thank you for inviting us to sing for you tonight. The road course started in November of this year and is open to fourth and fifth graders. We are excited to share what we've been working on during our early morning chorus rehearsals.
My name is Ainsley. I'm a fifth grader. First up is This Pretty Planet, a folk song by Tom Chapin. This month at Thoreau, we are celebrating Earth Month. So this is the perfect song to get us in the mood to take care of our planet. This song is sung in two part round or a canon. That means half the group starts and the other half starts a few beats later.
My name is Burton and I am in, I am a fourth grader. The next song we will sing is called Yonder Come Day, a Georgia sea island spiritual. This song is about looking forward to a new day. If you listen closely, you'll notice in this song, we, we sing three different parts.
I asked you to really sing up because people on Zoom are having a hard time hearing you. Maybe move that mic a little closer. All right, can you guys sing a little louder so the people at home?
The wall, right? We don't want to be leaning up against the wall. Don't step on each other though.
Oh, my soul.
Hello, my name is Patrick and I'm a fifth grader. Our final song for tonight is My Favorite Things from the classical musical, The Sound of Music. We hope you enjoyed our music tonight. Thank you again for having us.
It was better.
Okay.
According to the folks texting me, yes.
All right, so keep the energy going.
Yeah.
Thank you for the job, everybody. Thank you again so much for having us. And also thank you to all the Thoreau parents who are getting your singers to school so early and getting us here tonight. So I thank you so much. We have a lot of fun in chorus and we're looking forward to our next concert coming up in May, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You were excellent and the middle school should look out for all of you coming to the chorus next year. Exactly. We have a chorus in middle school. There is chorus in middle schools. All right.
Um, we're gonna just make our way out this way. All right, guys?
You're better than that.
Positive. All right. Have a fun stuff.
Okay, well, that was wonderful. Definitely set the tone of the evening. We started with great food, great singing. We'll turn the mood lights down in a minute. No, just kidding. Okay, so back to business. Alexa and I are gonna really quickly go through our goals just, um, just as a quick update that we've tried to do throughout the year. Do you want to start? Do you want me to start?
I don't care.
Why don't you take the first two and I'll do, we've gone over some of it.
Um, so we started out with a professional practice goals. In looking at them, we committed to reviewing these every quarter. So make sure that we are, are doing that. So, um, we highlighted, did you guys ever get a copy?
No.
Okay.
No, they're attached to the agenda. I just highlighted anything that I added. I added.
So yeah, so we, um, I feel like once we conclude the coffee schedule, we are, we're ready to move goal one A, which was host and host consistent schedule of community coffees. Um, as Court said, we'll probably continue with this trend in the upcoming school year. Um, but we were able to visit Concord, Carlisle in Boston all at least twice. Um, so I thought that was, that was pretty great. We, oh, we had an update to the number of subscribers we had. We have increased our subscribers.
We have.
By like, like a tangible amount. I wouldn't say we've doubled it, but it's significant. I forget what the number was.
Four seventy-five.
Four eighty.
Four eighty.
Four eighty.
Eighty this morning.
We started out at what?
I thought we were like two hundred something.
Okay, so we have almost doubled it, guys. Like, we've actually, it's like legit.
I mean, it's really what we're doing in that goal is asking people to opt into another email. So it is impressive if, that we've almost doubled it.
Um, so we were gonna, you know, we intended to leverage the superintendent's distribution list in social media. I would say we've, we've done that. Cause the goal was to double the school committee, um, distribution list. We've had, um, periodic review of our updates and the superintendent's message. We've increased our outreach. Um, we do have a QR code. I don't know if people are using it, but it is out there. I maybe used it a few times. Um, again, we have established our stairs round table and that was in an effort to review other school committees' actions and procedures to aggregate best practices vis a vis information sharing. Um, so, um, again, we have created a drive. I think once, um, we continue to collect data from other, um, groups, we can put that into our school committee drive. Um, so that people can sort of see what the other committees are doing. Um, and again, we were able to have two round tables already. We will have a third in May. The other goals that we had are, were complete. We have committed and reviewed our protocols and practices. Um, and then our professional practice goal of getting a budget. Ready? I mean, we're still talking about the budget. So I think, um, that demonstrates our commitment to it and our thoroughness with it. Um, and, uh, and again, just, just continuing on there. I'll let you guys.
Yep, I will do student centric goals. So tonight we are gonna hear, uh, from Kristen Anderson for the art YRBS survey results. And all of our student centric goals really happen at the end of the year because we're really measuring progress and results at the end of the year. So we can look forward to those coming up on May twenty-third. Uh, let me just see. So most of the student centric things are going to happen towards the end of the year. We have already talked about ACTs, SATs, access, AP exams. We have cross-referenced the budget, uh, to meet our student goals. And then just some, we've seen a lot of presentations this year, but since the last time we reported here, we've added mechanical engineering and the toys program at the high school. Uh, our strategic planning committee presented at our last meeting. Tonight, we saw the Thoreau chorus, which was definitely students right front and center, which I loved. And we are gonna hear from Jess. Who is our director of food, interim director of food services tonight. And just for the public, we did enjoy a lovely dinner beforehand in our executive session courtesy of the food services program here between both districts. And it was really excellent. And if you don't know about some of the choices that your kids are eating, um, please ask them because it's wonderful. Um, and then in terms of our DEIB goals, uh, we, since the last time Alexa and I reported, we did get our equity audit results on January seventeenth. And then on March eighth, we reviewed the instant bias reporting form. There's certainly more to come on that from Andrew. And that brings us kind of up to speed on our goals and kind of where we're at. And we'll report again, you know, towards the end of the school year. And now anyone else have any reports before we move on to Dr. Hunter? No? Okay. Dr. Hunter, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I had a few topics tonight to share feedback on. Uh, the strategic planning process wrapped up last week really successfully with, I think, a lot of positive.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Come in, come in.
I think a lot of positive feedback from the group, as well as requests to know what we're gonna be doing next. So we've started to make those plans. Big thanks to Kristin Anderson, she's online tonight, for her leadership through that process. The draft is strong. We're working on fine-tuning metrics, and there'll be another round of sharing fairly soon. So we're in great shape and excited for the goals for the next five years. I want to highlight Thursday night at the high school. The administration has collaborated with a number of folks across the building to put together a speaker series, really a menu, so parents can choose between topics on technology, mental health, social, executive functioning, and then challenge successes, offering a college admissions workshop on the healthier approach to that. So we're hoping for a big turnout. It was really a brainchild of how do we get more, parents more access to information, and wanted to try this model. So we're looking forward to that. I want to talk just a little bit about the Thoreau principal search. We have resumes still coming in for another few days. Kristin's launched the, the search committee today, and will do so again. We're aiming towards screening resumes with a first round of interviews on April twelfth. In the meantime, tomorrow, Kristin and I are at Thoreau to talk with staff on their hopes for a principal, and there's a Zoom forum on Monday night for families, parents, to give us that same feedback as we launch into the, look at the candidates that are interested in coming to us. So we're moving that right along. And then finally, I just want to talk on the homeless shelter at the hotel. One of my asks over the last week has been to start sharing out with Bob's help the costs we're incurring. So I put together a thorough memo that went to the state legislators over the weekend, and the school committee was able to see that. Just in terms of highlights of where we're at, first, I'll start by saying it's going really well. We feel really good about the ways we're able to service the kids and the families and the kids we're transporting back to their school of origin and the ones that we've enrolled here in district. So that part's been really satisfying. The part you all need to help also keep track of is where we are fiscally as this all rolls out. So we have twenty-five families we're servicing. There are three others at the hotel with kids younger than school age, so they will probably age up as we get to the fall, some of them. Eight students are enrolled at CPS in the high school. Of the eight, six are ELL newcomers with very little to know English. We're still working on three kids and placements of where they're going to be for a range of reasons. At the hotel, on a daily basis, we have three buses going in, elementary, middle, high school, and then there are ten vans going to the hotel to pick up kids to take to school of origin, to the combination of Chelsea, Walpole, Malden, Worcester, and Boston. Thirteen of those kids, of those twenty kids are going to Boston. So Boston's actually sending six vehicles just in and of itself. We are cost-sharing transportation with those districts I just mentioned, with the exception of two students who are special education and transportation's in their IEP. So we learned in the last week that those are still fiscally responsive, responsible to the home district. The van transportation's ranging everywhere from fifty-five to three hundred dollars today for our share. So double that for total cost, but our share is fifty to three hundred. Bob's projected out fifty-five days worth of this, so one day last week for the remaining fifty-five days of the school year, if everything stays status quo, which sort of not what we've experienced yet, but we'll get to that in a minute. At the region, we are then projecting a twenty-five thousand dollar expense. At CPS, we're projecting a fifty thousand dollar expense for a total cost of seventy-six thousand. So that, if we aggregate that into FY twenty-four, that obviously becomes concerning, because that would be for fifty-five days of a hundred and eighty versus the full hundred and eighty. So knowing, using that number to multiply, you start to end up in the hundreds of thousands total proportionate to the two districts. So that's obviously a pretty large concern of ours going into FY twenty-four, where there just isn't cash flow for that. And I'll talk on the reimbursement status in a minute. The, the state is telling me that we are gonna revisit the, where we are on April twelfth. There are still rooms they're allocating as long-term stay rooms. Half the hotel is running a short-term stay or has the capacity to. It's probably not all of that running at that, but the capacity is there. They're anticipating they would place approximately ten more families, once we decide the time is right. I will say they're working collaboratively with us to determine when that time is right. So, but it probably is this spring sometime. So more to come, I think, once we hit this benchmark date we set a month ago of April tenth, see how things are running on the mock side, which is the shelter leadership and on our side. In terms of staffing to the in-district kids, we hired a full-time family coordinator who started today, so we're gonna have a person to bridge the needs of the families, help with language. She speaks Spanish. That'll take some of the onus off of the lack of communication we've been struggling with. We're watching our ELL teachers loads, because all the newcomers get two hours a day. So the, we think we can probably get through the rest of the year. The fall may be another story if there's another ten families coming in, but we're reallocating between buildings and trying to just see how far our resources will go. What the state is continuing to say, the supplemental budget proposed by the governor with about forty-one million dollars in homeless shelter support, some of which would be to the schools, passed the senate last week, it's on the governor's desk awaiting signature. So the next phase is then for the governor's office to determine how this will all be allocated. They're certainly working and talking with Desi. Our state reps are on and actively communicating with them. What I tried to communicate was that reimbursement, which we do anticipate a hundred percent transportation reimbursement, from what they're telling us, and a per pupil expenditure. But if it's not timely, it will be just as catastrophic. So trying to explain, it needs to be timely and efficient and not a, you know, circuit-breaker model where we're getting it a year later. There's a lot of great listening going on. We just need it to happen. So that's really where we are, hoping that that next phase of, you know, protocol and procedure on the financial side starts to play out.
Can I ask a question? So my understanding is the transportation, like you said, to be a hundred percent covered. The way I've heard it being bantered about with respect to reimbursement is eighteen months. Is that outlined in the supplemental budget, or is that at the discretion of somebody?
My understanding is that it's still being discussed, which is why they're saying to me that they understand the, this was from DHCD on Friday. We understand the timeliness. Desi's on the call with me. The state reps are on the call with me, all trying to really be sure they can capture the timely factor of this.
But do we know who the buck stops with?
I believe it's the governor's office. When I talked to Salem, he had been on the phone with the lieutenant governor on this topic exactly.
Okay.
So.
This is Kim Driscoll kind of.
That's my understanding.
The office, working out a reimbursement schedule. We're advocating for what? What do we think is realistic quarterly?
I was pitching for monthly personally.
Monthly? Marvelous.
And then the, the per pupil, same thing. If, if they end up at the eighteen thousand annually, also having that be a rolling reimbursement and not all at the end, so.
And apart from continuing to sort of sign collective letters from here, is there anything that we can or should be doing?
I think that's the answer right now. It's, it's making sure our voice and influence is heard at the decision-maker level. I will say I'm encouraged by the way in which they're listening and responding right now. Salem felt the same, so I think those of us in this are being heard. We just need it to be.
Is it more than a half a dozen towns? It really is just about a half a dozen.
It's not a lot right now, no. So I'm actually, part of my note was like, we're trying to speak for those behind us here, because we know there's more to come. And this is really gonna get sorted out, so it's not devastating to the school district's fiscal status.
And, and I have to say, watching this unroll in the past couple of weeks, I mean, I really have to thank Lori, Bob, the principals, the administrative team, the, I mean, we did hear from some of the administrative assistants who have been over to the shelter, literally enrolling kids, and it has appeared to be seamless to the point that DHCD, I mean, they were very emotional about the way that Concord has really taken on this. And, you know, I think we're kind of like the model for how to do it right now. So thank you for that. It's been a huge amount of work, but I think really great for the kids that are here and the kids are back to their district and, and everyone else. So thank you for that.
I can't believe it's been two weeks. It feels like it's been a long time and.
Like what I said, two weeks.
It's been, it's been really.
But again, to echo what Tracy was saying, I do think it's worth noting, I was struck and moved by how much the professionals that we are working with, namely at DCHD, more so, well, and Desi too. But we're emotionally moved by the competence with which your team has swung, like swung in and managed this. It was, again, Tracy and I do participate in some of these calls with a lot of the people involved, and it just was unexpected, so.
It was unexpected.
Kudos to you guys.
Moving to us to see their gratitude.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah. Also, thank you. I know you had a full plate before this, and Jess, you guys have done an amazing job. So thank you. My, my question is on the reimbursement piece. If, if we are expecting a hundred percent reimbursement on transportation, are you also expecting some type of reimbursement for like staff you have to hire, or does that go into the per person?
Yeah, the number that, it would be part of that per pupil subsidy, the number we heard was eighteen thousand. I don't know if that's holding. State average is gold. The way Desi said it is, Desi has proposed that number to the governor's office. So that would be per pupil on an annual basis, but hopefully a month at a time.
And I would have to say that I heard multiple times, please keep accurate records. So the record keeping that they are also keeping is important, because you get eighteen thousand dollars per day. So if a child is. Per day, per day. So if a child is with us for twenty-three days, then you're gonna get twenty-three hundred dollars. So you really need to keep track of, because that's how you're gonna get reimbursed.
They're gonna aggregate that eighteen thousand annually to however long the child's with us. We did clarify a couple just technical questions. The, the out-of-district, the transportation school of origin is ours to split through the entirety of the family stay at the shelter. There is no end date to that. So when, while they're in the shelter environment, that is the status. They have rights to go to their original school, and we have obligation to cost-share. That was helpful to hear. And then I think also important is we are never the home district because of our temporary status here. So I think that's a relief, probably, right? Once they are placed in a, in a permanent housing setting, they have to go to the community that they move to, so.
That was sort of, that's like an interesting segue. My next question, which was, have you had conversations with some of these families that are hoping that they will finish out in Boston, for example, this school year, and then transition to Concord in the fall? Or is there, nobody has that?
Nobody's that, nobody's got that much longevity in their, their lifestyle right now. I think they're still trying to settle into, okay, we've got roof over our head, food coming in. What do we know now? What we know is, English is the biggest need over there, for sure. It's a barrier to all sorts of opportunities. So I think we might, through adult and community ed and community chess subsidy that we got last year, try to be even part of that, because we have L teachers on our staff for adult and community ed and, and subsidies available. So that's the biggest need, I think, but right now, in two weeks' time, it's really just stability.
Yeah. And are you, like, how are you thinking about this for next year?
Yeah. So what we know, if, if the families stay stable, we know there's at least a few five-year-olds that are gonna age up into kindergarten. We're curious about this, another ten families potentially. I would probably rather get to know them sooner than later and stabilize them this spring, so we're in a little bit more of a known environment for the fall, because I don't get the sense that transition, transience over there will be minimal, at least at this early stage of the shelter status.
Any other questions or comments regarding the homeless shelter?
Senator Barrett spoke last night to the select board about his attention to the supplemental budget, so in addition to the reps, I think we've got a lot.
He's been on many of the calls. I don't mean to leave him out, yeah.
Does the town have any active role at this point, now that the chess has moved in, mock has moved in, schools have moved in? Where, where does that leave the town?
So they're part of the meetings, the, the weekly meetings that we're having. I certainly have heard police and fire state a little bit of the support. They've given minimal, but they've certainly had to attend here and there. Little bit with pedestrian traffic over there and how dangerous Route Two is. I think that's their priority right now, is to try to help the members of the hotel and the families there know they can't be crossing Route Two over there. It's so dangerous. That was a big part of the last conversation.
How many sidewalks go over there?
I think there is up Elm Street.
Elm Street, like, actually almost to the road, there's sidewalk.
Families are trying to go over to Baker Ave there, and that's not.
No, yeah, that's the worst intersection, I think.
They are billing transportation options in for the families. They are actively using Lyft, Lyft like Uber, and they've got a van imminently coming this week to help get people around town and things like that. So they're trying to build out options. I think so, yeah.
Glad it's going smoothly.
It's going really well, and that is a testament to the, I mean, really, all hands on deck here at the schools, but that's been community-wide, so it's been really great.
Nice to see.
Yeah.
Great.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right, and now, we are very excited to welcome Jess Brown, and I will, for, just for the public, we enjoyed a dinner this evening before we came into our meeting.
There are perks.
There are perks to being on the school committee.
Thank you, five years to get one.
I'll let, would you like to introduce Jess?
Actually, I'm gonna have Bob introduce Jess, since she's on his team.
Pleased to introduce Jess as our, serving as our interim director of food service and nutrition. And it's a lot of exciting things going on in our schools. School lunch is not what we might have grown up expecting to see today. It's very different in our schools. It was eye-opening for me when I came here, and it's improved since I've joined. Jess is gonna talk about some of the things we're doing, a lot of the things that we're interested in Concord as well, not just, you know, some of it kind of tangential things like sustainability and composting. And I don't want to say anymore and take away from the presentation, so without further ado, it's all you, Jess.
Well, nice seeing you all again. This evening, we had a little something to eat. But really, Bob is right. There's a lot that has changed in the food service department, even just in recent years. I've been working with the district since January of twenty twenty. I was my predecessor's assistant, and as we know, January twenty twenty was just the precursor to COVID breaking out. So I probably spent nine weeks, you know, working on what I would call the previous program that was, you know, present at the district. And, you know, through COVID. Do I need to step closer to it?
Yeah, close to the microphone, yes. Sit up if you want. Be one of us.
See, I can stand if the microphone makes sense. All right, yeah, I'll just stand closer to it. Okay. Um, so as the fall of twenty twenty, you know, came about, we really decided to make a real change. Because of all the other changes that were happening, we knew that, you know, we had to do kind of packaging for food. We knew we had to, you know, offer something that was comprehensive for all students in one, you know, meal, really. And through some of those changes, and through some of the adversity of the pandemic, we were able to find new and creative solutions to offer the community, I think something they've been looking for for a lot of years. And here we are, with what I think is still in the preliminary stages of what we can be doing with the department and what we can be doing with food service for, you know, students. But I think, you know, this is, this is a good start, and I think we're pretty proud of what's been going on. So, yeah, I guess that's, sorry, I've actually put a little video together. We have a staff of roughly eighteen across both districts. And so these are just a few clips of things that have been going on this year, kind of meet some of the staff and see some kids enjoying food. So, yeah.
Great. Aaron, can you go?
Hi, I'm Michelle Froski, and I am the lead cook at Alba Elementary.
I'm Joe Geary, and I'm lead cook at the PBD Middle School. We use fresh food for our lunches, and it's awesome to blow away the preconceived notions of school lunches. To get the kids' feedback, coming in and complimenting us on the food is awesome. Makes it all worth it.
Hi, my name is Katie Newt, and I am the lead cook at the Willard Elementary School. My favorite part of working here is getting to work with the kids every day and getting to know them and cooking for them.
My name is Matt Disina, and I'm the executive chef here at the Concord Carlisle Regional High School.
Hi, my name is Grace Publicover. I am the cafeteria manager here at Concord Carlisle Regional High School.
Hi, my name is Tony Small. I'm the lead cook here at the Row Elementary School. My favorite part about working here is watching the kids get excited to see the food I make.
What I really enjoy about this job is seeing the kids every day and making food that they love.
The best part of my job is interacting with the students and getting to see them every day.
Hi, my name is TK and I am the head cook at Sanborn Middle School.
All right. Well, despite, you know, so despite, you know, some of the technology lag there, that was, that's a video that my staff, you know, and I put together really briefly. And as you can see, our staff is really committed to the students. I mean, I think they really enjoy their job. I think some of the changes we've made has really made them take pride in their work as well. And they, they clearly do everything for the kids and it's really, it really, really shows. So that's great. And we can just click through some of these screens. You met some of these people during the video. But our high school staff, our middle school staff, each of our elementary school staffs. And like I said, they just all do a super nice job and I'm, I'm proud to work with them. So one thing I wanted to highlight as far as some of the changes that have happened since COVID in the past few years is that we've implemented a contactless ordering system. So it's more of like an online setting, you know, like you might order takeout almost called Nutrislice. All of our menus are represented there and you're able to see images of the food as well as order them up to five days in advance. You can order as late as the day of at 8:00 AM. And like I said, there's a variety of choices each day. I know a lot of districts, even like just in our area are offering one or two different items during the day. We offer five to six different items each day in addition to a hot lunch. So it just, like I said, this gives a variety of choices for kids. So, you know, it just broadens access. You know, if you're gluten-free kid, you're able to have choices each day. If you're a vegetarian kid, you have choices each day. So some of those changes have, have been really instrumental in participation rates. We'll go to the next thing.
Next, Erin.
Oh, you know, the next slide. We've also made a lot of strides in the quality and food sourcing. We've made a real conscious effort to choosing all of our poultry. All of it is raised, whole muscle meats without antibiotics and without hormones. All of our turkey and deli meats in the same way. I mean, we'd like to get to where all of our meat choices are in that realm. The beef is not there. The pork is not there. However, we're getting there. Chicken is what we use the most of. And the fact that we've been able to, you know, really hone in on just that to start, I think is, is a point of pride. So that's great. We're also using all kind of fresh vegetables or IQF freshly frozen vegetables. No longer are we getting cans of like commodity green beans or, you know, even, you know, canned fruit and things like that. Those aren't things you see on our shelves and our kitchens any longer. Any of the canned items are usually crushed tomatoes, canned beans. We're using those, those products for sure, but we're using them, you know, in their like rarest form to create actual food and food products. So, and also as far as our disposables are concerned, we're moving away from plastics that can't be recycled and moving away from any paper products that we can that are like wax lined, so they're not able to be compostable. Everything that we ate from today earlier was all compostable or all recyclable material, including the forks. So we can go to the next slide. I'm also proud to say that at the high school, we're able to source food from Beryl Farm, which is right down the street, I think, as you all well know. I'd like to start bringing in even more of those products that we're getting from them. But right now we're getting eggs, apples, farm greens, mushrooms from time to time as well. And it, it's great, you know? It's, I think it's something that reflects the values of the community. So the fact that we're able to use them at the high school is huge. Next slide. We just talked about, you know, compostable materials, getting away from all plastic straws, getting away from plastic cutlery, any wax lined paper products, all molded fiber and compostable products when we are using disposables. Next slide, please. We can just move right into participation rates. I know we were talking about this briefly earlier. You can see the participation rates in the school year 2019, 2020. You know, the numbers are there and they bear out. You can see the biggest increase we were able to have at Sanborn, where we've got a 23% increase there over three years. The participation rates being up across the district, I think we obviously can attribute to the universal free lunch program. That's also great. But I do think the changes that we have been making are coming through to families and kids. People are wanting to buy lunch, wanting to, you know, look at the menus, make choices. And I think we're able to offer them something they really like. Next slide, please. Our composting program. So we've been composting in the cafeteria kitchens since 2020. We've expanded the composting program to our cafeterias. This year, our middle schools are still coming on board with that and being able to compost all of their even broaden lunch materials in the cafeteria. But just even last year, we were able to compost 30 tons of, of materials. So that's good. This year, obviously, we're looking to see that jump considerably, seeing as how we did expand that program to the cafeterias, not just the cafeteria kitchen waste. So I think there's an opportunity for us to expand the composting program beyond just the cafeterias. But like I said, this is a good start. Yep. Next slide, please. Student engagement for like our staff is big. They obviously enjoy spending a lot of time with the kids, getting involved in some of their initiatives and programs. Some of the things that we do at the high school annually, every year, we always do the Thanksgiving luncheon. We haven't done it in person like we have in previous years. I think next year we'll get back to an in-person model. But we have been doing curbside pickup where, you know, our kitchen staff prepares a full Thanksgiving meal, packages it individually and works with the council on aging to kind of distribute those meals to seniors throughout the community. We do the same thing with the St. Patrick's Day luncheon that we've just did two weekends ago. Yes, yeah, two weekends ago. And it's, it's great. I mean, I know the community really enjoys it. The seniors always enjoy that meal. And that will also be back in person, I believe, next year, according to some of the faculty advisors. You might've seen some clips during the video of the cupcake fundraiser the kids did at school. They do a variety of those things. We try our best to partner with these groups at school, whether it's student council, student government, or any of the clubs to, you know, do fundraisers that build them up, you know, by doing, you know, stuff for their school as well as contributing money to a charity of their choice. So, yeah, next slide. Some of the stuff we're really looking to do toward the future, obviously, our sustainability goals are big in the district. And we want to continue to partner with the sustainability community, committee. Priscilla is great and definitely a friend of the food service department. So we're going to continue to work with her to do what we can to help support the buildings throughout, not just the cafeteria, not just the kitchen. We also are looking to, in the same vein of sustainability, look to source more locally sourced food. Desi is providing a grant this year that we have finished applying for, for both districts. I'm hoping that we receive it. We're hoping to hear back about that by the end of the school year. And that will make a considerable dent in what we're able to bring in just locally. So we can expand beyond Beryl to some of the other products beyond just produce that I think we can, we could really use and really use the money for. And then some of the things that I'm looking to do, just from an administrative standpoint, is, you know, bringing some of the compliance documentation that everyone's written down on papers for years. There's binders and binders and cabinets and cabinets full of these things for Desi audits. They're really important to keep moving all of those things digital. Not only, we not have the space to keep all that paperwork anymore. We need to be able to pull it up quicker and faster than just digging through file cabinets when we do have our Desi compliance audits. So I'm in the process. And in the process of teaching and training our staff how to do those things and keep them held digitally. So, you know, we're ready when Desi comes by.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think that's it. I guess I want to move through it quickly, but I'm happy to take questions.
Yeah. Before you do, Jess, I just, the big shout out, Jess found out August 8th maybe that we were going to ask her to step up to take over the directorship because Bryce McKnight resigned the first week in August. So I can't say enough about, not only did she step up, but excel and really take a program to another level. So we're really grateful, Jess, for all your work and really enjoying it very much.
Thank you.
Food was excellent tonight. And I have to say, I've got two kids at the high school that have said the food is so much better. So no, and that is this year, you know, and they've, they've been at the high school. I think anyone that has a kid at the high school knows, like, they really, they're buying lunch at school and just loving it. So.
Great.
Thank you. So great.
You're welcome. That's really great to hear. That's wonderful. I can't wait to tell the staff.
Yeah, no, it's, and it's a different, like, it's definitely a difference. And that's, that's who we look to is we look to the kids and they, the kids are loving lunch, buying lunch and consumers.
They love, they, they appreciate the variety for this month, like the ramen. I heard all about them.
All good.
Amazing. A little sadness that the chicken Caesar's weren't available at the same time. Get to branch out and try something new.
Exactly. It's bad, I swear.
And the Nutrislice, I think, is also a particularly effective interface. That's been really helpful. I like being able to, I do everything on Sunday morning or Sunday night for the week. That's another thing that I was curious, is it helpful for parents to do that to, so you can plan your week? Or, or is it intended to be fluid and something you can do in the morning? Like, would you ever, you know, I'm just curious from your perspective on how parents are using it.
I mean, as far as I know, I have a two and a half year old. So, you know, I, I mean, I'm doing other things on Sunday night. But at the same time, I think that it does give you the flexibility to be able to sit down Sunday night and say, okay, what do you want for lunch all week? Pick it out. Boom, done. You don't have to think about it anymore. Right? At the same time, you know, if it's 6:45 in the morning or 7:45 in the morning, you're like, man, you know what? I was making lunch, but I didn't get to it. I can, you can pull it right up, you know? And so it gives you the flexibility to be able to do either one. And, you know, I can't stress enough that if you don't make the eight o'clock, you know, cutoff, it's okay.
We've all been there.
We've, right, exactly. All been there. So, you know, all of our leads get emails, I mean, every day, every other day. And, you know, we, we add lunches all the time.
And my fourth graders are reporting in addition to the lunch, so which I, you know, order, there's also like snacks for procurement, like it seems like there's like fruit lying, not lying around, but available for like a grab and go.
Yeah.
Situation. You didn't talk about that. That's awesome. My, my kids are so into that too.
So obviously there's a composed lunch that you can get, a variety of choices in. But if you bring your lunch, there's, you know, always a basket of apples, oranges, bananas. Those are.
My fourth grader is telling the truth when he says I can also take the banana.
Also take a banana. Yes, absolutely.
Yep. You never know. That's excellent. I mean, like, that has been wonderful too. And you didn't even talk about it.
Exactly. There are those at all the levels. There's all of those things that you can augment to your lunch that are, you know, in the cost, you know, of lunch.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's great.
So we saw participation go way up, double in three, three of the schools, right? Picture after picture of happy kids. And it seems pretty apparent that's because of your professionalism and that of the people around you. You take it very seriously and, and it, it pays. So thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Well, thank you.
I know you have Bob and Lori at your back. I hope you know you have a school committee that's very appreciative.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. The staff, a lot of them have been here for a lot of years. And then we also have some newcomers. I can't say enough about, you know, their willingness to kind of be with us on this journey and get some of these changes made. I think, like I said, they're taking pride in the fact that we're professionalizing kind of these roles, having them take part and tracking some of their expenses and knowing certain things. And, you know, everyone is safe certified on our staff too. You know, just some of these added elements, like I said, I think has really made a difference. And, you know, what our staff is bringing to, to, to the learners during the course of the day. So.
I have a couple of comments. Sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I know.
One is, I love that you're focusing on locally sourced. I think that's so awesome. I mean, we have so many options around here, like we, I know it's more expensive. So, and that's the barrier. But I just love that you're trying to think creatively and getting grants and whatnot to make that a priority. I also, I have two kids at Thoreau, one who will be in a couple of years. And my, one of them will, is pretty flexible. The other one is very picky. And they, it has expanded his, his palate, like he will actually, because of the peer pressure, because it tastes good, try things that if I were to put in front of him, he would absolutely refuse, which he does on a regular basis. However, so I'm grateful for that too, like meatball subs, the basic things, but like good, good food that he is now like tacos and things that we're now really introducing at home too, because he's trying it at school and being like, it's okay. And I'll take it's okay. It's great. So I'm really grateful for that. And then I had the opportunity to, I signed up one day to help with the composting. And it was, it's such an amazing, just like assembly line that the kids now just know they throw the food in the trash. So they're in composting and recycling. And I love that kind of mentality that we're training them to do. So I know that's just part of it, but I, I'm grateful for that attention as well. And I think something you said earlier when you were presenting the meals was that I, I might be getting this wrong, but was something like inclusion isn't just about allergies, that there's so many things about what kids can and will and do eat and how thoughtful you are about that. I really respected that. So. All in all, thank you. I think food is so critical to learning and nutrition is hard with children.
So hard.
So, thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome. Great.
I just add a couple.
Yes, go ahead.
So the food you've seen and it speaks for itself. I just wanted to highlight in addition to that, the student engagement piece. You can see the students kind of participating in the composting. We also had our first halal meal. I don't know if you had heard about this before or not, but this came from a student making a case for a meal and meeting with Jess. And we delivered a halal chicken tender meal at Willard, well, at all the schools, right? I was at Willard and.
You were at Willard, but yep, all schools.
So just, you know, the engaging of students is kind of fantastic, I think. And then you see some community engagement, some of the things she presented to this, the boiled St. Patrick's dinner. And so it's kind of embedded within our school, schools.
Awesome. And that wasn't easy to pull off because you had to do all that packaging. I mean, I would think it's much easier when you have the senior citizens come in the building. I, I might've had a son and his friend on delivery duty. So I felt like I knew about the delivery process too. But they, the seniors really enjoyed receiving the mails too, because they felt like someone had taken the time to make, prepare, package, and then to the delivery of it. And the, the contact with the kids was actually really great. So I know that took a lot of extra effort. And even when we shut down in 2020, you were here in 2020, the amount that happened in the kitchens that no one knew about. I think, you know, thank you for that. And I know it was, you know, three years ago, but very real that, you know, people were really. very real that, you know, people were really in need of food and what the kitchen staff did with the administrators and getting food to people was really exceptional.
Yeah, that was a good program that I think got run over the course of that summer. And we had a lot of community volunteers. And I mean, I was new to the district and I got a chance to meet a lot of parents, a lot of faculty from across the schools that, you know, I've seen in recent years and they're like, oh, I remember. We were doing food donations. I was like, oh, yeah. But, um, so that was, that, that was a big deal. And I think, like I said, it was just part of something that the community really cared about and the food service department was happy to be a part of.
Just very quickly, I just want to say, I wouldn't call this a school lunch. It's more of a culinary experience. We saw all the smiles in the pictures and we were certainly smiling while we were eating. And it's certainly not the lunches we had when we were younger, as Bob said.
Why not?
So I just want to say, you guys have done an amazing job. It's quality food. It tastes good and it looks good. And I like that you can see the food that you're ordering, because that's really something I like to see what I'm ordering. So to have that for the kids. And also I know you said the student participation went up. I'm wondering if the staff also participation went up because it's certainly food I want to have on a daily basis.
It has. It, it really is. And I know that, you know, just being a part of this change the past couple of years, it was one of the metrics that we would take a look at to see, okay, so our, our participation rates for students is this, but you know, we've got a hundred more dollars worth of, you know, you know, faculty and staff participation. It's ticked up, up, up and up steadily. We have decent participation rates across the board at, you know, well, I wouldn't say participation rates as far as adults, but you can see the increase, I'd say, in participation for adults. People really enjoy the meals and they look forward to certain things. For sure.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For all your time tonight.
Yeah, I know. Have a good night. Thank you.
I wonder if I could put a question to, relevant, I think to this. We've had state aid, we've had federal aid, we've had school lunch support. We've come so far, we don't want to slip. Is that going to be a big challenge for us?
They, I don't know if it's approved or about, was it just approved? The, the universal meals, well, not the, the state program for meals was approved again through next year.
So we're good through fiscal twenty-four.
Correct.
That's coming. Yeah, okay. I'm just worried about protecting what you
Yeah, I think, because that approval came with a, it might not last forever out of the governor's office. I actually think Jess is inspiring people to want to participate. And the, you know, a couple of years of free may build that, you know, experience so that they keep coming even as they have to contribute.
All your legislature.
Yep.
And I do think the kids aren't participating because it's free. They're participating because it's good.
Good.
You know, and they don't care. And at the high school in particular, you know, I have a kid that could leave and go to Sorrento's every day and he chooses to stay and eat in the building. So.
Free, you'll go once, but not twice.
And I also think Nutrislice has changed, I think it changed everything because I, I, in the younger grades, whether it's free or not, it puts more control and ease in the hand of the parents. So I think that is, don't underestimate, right, the power of what that's done for like the K to eight set.
Yeah, yeah. But even K to five, the teachers not spending 10 minutes doing lunch count, you know?
Yeah, and then the office chasing it.
Right, right. Did you send your lunch to the counter?
Same way. Jemigos, did you have something? Sorry.
No, exactly what Kami said. It makes it easier for the students.
Yeah.
Students can do it themselves.
Right, yeah.
Really.
Right.
And I'll just note, because we've had new experiences with limited English families, like we're still making the technology work. We're either supporting them or they're getting access via translated apps on their phones. So it's, that's been an interesting test for us, is whether we'd have to work around nutrism or not. And we're going just fine. So.
Great, that's great. All right. So up next, we have Kristen Anderson and the Youth Risk Behavior Survey results. I think she's on with us. I hope you're feeling a little bit better.
I think you're all happy that I'm very far away with my contagious cold. Let me go ahead and share my screen and tell you that I have, there are about eighty slides here. So I'm going to present the ones that are, with stars in the lower right-hand corner, but this whole slideshow is available online, as well as the slideshows from previous years administration of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the overall findings and then dig into some areas that need our attention the most. And just remind you two things. One is that this is a very important survey for us for many reasons. And one of those is that it measures risky behaviors. So what we're going to be hearing about are some behaviors that are sometimes hard to hear about with our students, the level of stress. We'll hear about suicide ideation, alcohol use and so forth. So this is hard to hear. It's very important to hear because you get a sense of where our kids are. And also, many of these measures are useful in the metrics of our strategic plan, specifically in the second column, the strategic objective about wellbeing and the third column about diversity, equity, inclusion and especially belonging. You'll see some data from that tonight. So we have participated in a group of eleven schools over the past twenty-five years, working with Emerson Hospital. They hire a group called Market Street Research to actually write and administer the, the test, the measurement. And I've been working with them for, I think, twelve years and people in my role and nurse role or head of guidance. Recently, Allison Newicki at the high school, the head of guidance, has also joined me. And that group of about twenty people gets together and we actually write the questions. And so we try to keep them as consistent as possible from year to year so that we can measure across time if we're getting better or getting worse. So we try to keep them the same. We don't change them as much as possible. But every year we do add a few more questions and then we subtract a few more questions. So our goal is to keep this about twenty minutes long when kids take it. Kids take it in our schools during the school day, usually during an extended advisory or something like that. So we have a very high participation rate because they are taking it during the school time. We give it in sixth grade, eighth grade, and then nine through twelfth grades. There are different questions on a smaller set of questions on the sixth grade test. We don't ask about some of them, the more advanced risky behaviors. And then the eighth grade, we ask about a few more and then nine through twelfth graders all take the same assessment. So if you see this slide, those are the school districts that we compare ourselves. So when you see the data that is in aggregate, we're not, it's not a state aggregate. It's an aggregate of those eleven school districts around us. We're one of the bigger school districts, but certainly not the biggest taking it. So I think Acton-Boxboro is, is the largest, but as you can see the list, they're very comparable with us. So just gonna skip. Okay, so summary of overall findings. So these are from the spring of last year, 2022, and we had a full year back to school after the pandemic. And so we saw an increase in some of our risky behaviors. So you can see in these risky behaviors very concerning, I would say, you can see right from the get-go, the probably the highest level of concern about stress, depression, self-harm and increase in suicide ideation. Also, and I'll get into some of the other particulars, a little bit more in being bullied at sixth grade, but it's gone down at eighth grade. And then an interesting increase in the students looking at pornography. So some substantial decreases and we have been really happy with these substantial decreases over the years. As you know, we have really focused on vaping and trying to decrease the amount of vaping. So we saw a big decrease of that. Alcohol consumption has gone down, binge drinking has gone down, social parties at families' houses that involve alcohol has gone down. So, and I'm also happy to report low levels of sleep at the middle school have gone down, as has the stress from workload. So we're very excited about that. Okay. So so sixth graders and eighth graders, but really sixth graders are most vulnerable to risky behaviors, but they also have the most support. So that's important to realize that they feel more connected to their parents, as you would imagine, and as probably you enjoy more of a feeling of connection with your students. They're more vulnerable, but they're also more connected to adult support. So you'll see that as we go along. So this is probably the biggest takeaway beyond the stress and suicide ideation that I want you to take away, which is students have higher levels of risky behavior if they're historically marginalized populations. Meaning students of color, students with special needs. But far and away, the group that experiences them, that tells us that they experience the most risky behaviors are students who identify as transgender or non-binary. They're especially vulnerable on every measure that we give. So we look for correlation between different pieces and in the appendices, you'll see all the extra data there. So they don't feel as if they belong at school at higher rates. They can be bullied at higher rates, sexually harassed at higher rates. And then of course, be depressed, harm themselves or consider suicide at higher rates. So that's the transgender and non-binary. Similarly, for the racial and ethnic groups, not quite as high, but we're talking about American Indian, black or African-American, and then South Asian Americans, higher rates, even though they only make up about one percent of our population. So here is a couple of slides on resilience, trust and belonging. So our students have a relatively high level of resilience. You can see it's measured out of four point to five is very, very high. And we have an average range in the three point two or something like that. That's pretty high. However, there is a gap in the resilience level. So those who identify as female or non-heterosexual or who have experienced bullying are more likely to be low in resilience. Males are twice as likely to be high in resilience compared to females. And students high in resilience are likely to identify as heterosexual and not have experienced bullying. So in terms of safety and support, we're getting into, do they have a trusted adult at home and at school? Very, very many trusted adults in, in the homes. And then outside of the school, about seventy-one percent of Concord Carlisle students, that's the high school students feel they have a teacher or adult at school they can talk to if they're experiencing a problem. If they don't, about eleven percent of that, of the population says they don't. And you can see the demographics on the right-hand side. They are historically marginalized populations with transgender and non-binary students in that list, as well as some of our students of color. So this is a question that literally I wrote, a set of questions, because it was in our strategic plan for the last five years. So we asked about it. And overall, sixty-nine percent of the students at the high school agree or strongly agree that they belong in school with twenty-three feeling neutral about it. So only ten percent of the population feel as if they don't belong. But as you would guess from all the other data and your own experience, twenty-five, twenty-three percent of those students who identify as non-binary are in there. Thirty-two percent who identify as transgender, twenty percent who identify as non-heterosexual. And then you also see our Southeast Asian and Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islanders there as well. So sense of belonging is very strong. The students who are at the outskirts are historically marginalized. All right, we're not going to spend too much time on bullying and cyberbullying and sexual harassment because thankfully, they have gone down. So we are excited about that. Okay, so here's our real section. We're going to spend a lot of time on, which is the stress, depression and suicide ideation. So as you will know, even if you look at the aggregate, Concord and Concord Carlisle are high for stress. Even when you compare us to our like districts like Acton-Boxboro, Bedford and so forth. School and academic workload remains the largest source of stress among all students. But those in eighth grade indicate experiencing less stress due to their academic workload than they did in 2020. And those in the high school experience more stress. Additionally, students of all grade levels indicate that they have more stress at home than in previous years. So coping mechanisms, you can kind of see on the right hand, students have a variety of coping mechanisms. Some of them are positive exercise and so forth, talking to someone. And some of them are maybe negative or neutral, television, social media, gaming and so forth. Depression increasing. And as you would expect, the students who are most at risk are our historically marginalized populations. Self-harm, again, the same. It is increasing twenty percent, twenty percent. So one-fifth of every class of students has, indicates that they have done self-harm. And the rates of self-harm are increasing among our middle school students compared to 2020. It's more than double what it was for sixth graders in 2020, so two years ago. The aggregate analysis show that students with a non-traditional gender or sexual orientation have especially high rates of self-harm. And those who self-harm also show a display of high rates of suicide consideration and sexual harassment. Suicide consideration is at twelve percent of the population. Again, that's way, way, way too high and it has increased. You can see down in the lower left, 2020, we had two percent of our sixth graders reporting that they had thought about committing suicide. And in 2020, it was at ten percent. So suicide planning and attempts, fifty-six percent of the students at the high school who had seriously considered suicide had made a plan. And although the numbers are small, sixth grade, they are showing a decrease in going a step further. Those who are, have suicide ideation by making a plan. So these are very serious numbers. Students who've actually been physically injured in a suicide attempt. And students who have heard about another student reporting that they're thinking about hurting themselves. All right, so that was stress. We're not going to spend that long on drugs, alcohol and sex, except to say that they are moving in the right direction, as I said. Less, fewer drugs. Vaping has gone down, alcohol and binge drinking has gone down, promiscuous sex has gone down. Body image and dieting has also gone down or stayed the same. And again, some correlation there. All right, so I want to spend a while here on this section about social media and cellphone use, because you'll see it correlates with those feelings of depression and so forth. So students do report on having a hidden social media account, which is highest among our ninth graders, with nearly three times as many ninth graders having a hidden, hidden from their parents' social media account than those in sixth grade. And eighth graders show a substantial increase in hidden social media accounts compared to previous years. Overall, parents are less likely to monitor social media for older students. So 49% of sixth graders' parents monitor, going down to 38 in eighth grade and 13% at high school. Yeah, but 17% of our students at the high school say that their parents don't know about a social media account that they have. Okay. This is cellphone usage. We're about to come up to, yeah, here it is. Big shocker. When I first read this, I thought it was weekly data. It's actually daily data. So Concord Carlisle students report spending a median time, middle amount of time, oops, just under three hours a day on electronic devices on weekdays, with ninth graders spending the most time, three hours a day, while eighth graders show an increase in spending six or more hours on such devices compared to 2020. And this is come, 2020 is comparable to 2018, so a big increase in the last two years. And our high school students think they spend, estimate they spend over two hours on social media on weekdays. So I love this, we're spending too much time on our cellphones, but 39% of us know that we are. So Concord and Concord Carlisle students feel they spend too much time on their phones, and 32% feel they spend too much time on social media. And our, as you see, our 12th graders are particularly aware. So this is a big one. Again, we asked for this question to be in the survey because we asked about cellphone uses at night, and so if students have their cellphones in their bedroom at night. So around a third of Concord eighth graders and, and then the high schoolers keep their phone in their bedroom at night. And you can see when they don't have their cellphone in their bed, in their bedroom, they keep it in their bedroom turned off, they keep it somewhere else in the house, their parents take their phone at night, or something else, they put it somewhere else. And this is them keeping them turned off the times. Okay. How distracting they are. They feel like they need to respond immediately when someone puts a message to them on social media. This actually has gone down. So this is our slide on pornography. I, I mentioned that it had gone up, 27% of our population report that they are spending time looking at pornography. So homework is one of our specific strategic initiatives. How much time are students spending on homework a day? You might think this contributes to stress from the earlier slide. And they are saying two hours. The eighth graders used to report that they were spending three or more hours. That has actually gone down. And, but the high schoolers are reporting they have more homework. 75% of our high schoolers who report that they have three or more hours of homework also indicate that they have somewhat high or very high levels of stress due to their academic load. This is really interesting about sleep. So 35% of the population of our students are getting six or fewer hours of sleep each night, with our historically marginalized students more likely to be in that category of not getting enough sleep. So the next few pages are all the appendices. And I just put this slide on there. This is from me, so you know a little of what we, how we use the data and how we respond to the data. So we do use the data in our health classes at the high school. So every year we turn it over. And this is actually really good, because it corrects the perception that everybody's doing risky behaviors by seeing they're actually, actually in pretty low numbers. And, but it also gives the teachers a reason why they're teaching about some of these things. So we have a lot of people that study this data inside the schools and work with it, put into place a different plans with it. And we have partnerships with outside groups. So most importantly, probably our administrative team and also our pre-cated 22 mental health team. This is all of our guidance counselors and school psychologists, our behavior specialists, and some school administrators. We also have our school nurses that look carefully at this, the town nurses and the town social worker. Now we are working in partnership between the mental health team and Bright, which is an organization that helps schools create an MTSS, multi-tiered system of support for social, emotional, mental health, and behavioral needs. So the goal for what we're doing, this is a kind of three- to five-year plan, is to put into place screeners. And we're currently piloting the DASSA screener to pick up any students that are at risk for any of these behaviors. And so that we can give them the individualized needed support that will help them actually not go into the risky behavior category. So we also, as you know, changed companies for our referral service for families to get outside therapists for students and, and actually for themselves. And we switched from the William James Referral Service to CareSalus. We've had great numbers there. People have been able to find therapists, and the mental health team monitors this at each of our monthly meetings. We have a great partnership, and we have through the years with Emerson Hospital working on this, NAMI, which is the National Association for Mental Illness. We are working at the middle school and the high school, as you know, with challenge success. And then we have a partnership with Landmark School also working on this. So we have more new curricula that have been working on this. So I mentioned the DASSA screener, that's a pro-social. So how good do kids feel, or do their kids' teachers feel, kids are doing in the social, emotional, and mental health areas? As you know, we have new curricula for elementary schools in fly, five, and responsive classrooms that are working on some of these issues. Similarly, we have a new elementary health curriculum that deals with all of these issues. The Great Body Shop, as does our, I think it's about six years old, the advisory curriculum at the middle school called Homebase. Both, I wanted to point out the health curriculum at CMS and CCHS, because our students take health more than double what they, schools, in similar schools around us do. So for example, at our middle school, kids have health twice in a six-day rotation all year long, whereas in other school districts, they only have it for a quarter, for example. At CMS and CCHS, we also give a screener called the Signs of Suicide. So clearly, that's looking for students who are thinking about suicide, are very depressed. And then we have a very new piece of software that we use to educate kids at the high school about mental illness or brain health. And this is a CCHS alum who created this software and is working with Health Educator at Yale University to do this. So we're really excited to be using this. It's a great resource for us. And then we have ongoing professional development for our staff. We, I mentioned the MTSS system. We also have Allison Awiky and Dan Simone teaching mental health first aid to our educators. We've had great speakers in Dr. Lynn Lyons on working with kids with anxiety, Dr. Sarah Ward on executive function, Dr. Jessica Minahan on behavior. So that's just a brain dump of what I could come up with at the moment in terms of responses. So with that, I will stop the share and ask if you have any questions.
Yes, thank you so much, Kristin. Domingos is up first. Go ahead.
Good evening. I noticed that on some of the slides, the charts, the black and brown students percentages are not reflected on all of them. Is there a reason for that?
It depends on if they are being broken out. So after each general aggregate slide, there should be our historically marginalized populations, a second slide.
So maybe it's in, in your full report, like you just gave us the starred slides. But if you go on the website, it's broken out in slides that we didn't necessarily see. They were like underneath that slide. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, you can see how every group of students answered every question. The ones that I put up were the ones that Market Street Research gave us, because they're statistically significant, meaning black and brown students are a historically marginalized population. And those behaviors that I was reporting on, they are at greater risk for.
So, so would it mean that they like weren't at as greater risk as some of the ones that were called out?
Right, yeah. So greater risk for depression or less sleep, but not for other risk behaviors, alcohol consumption or something like that. Yeah.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, if you go through, you'll see that if they hit the threshold to be statistically significant, then it's there. So if you want to spend more time in the 80 slides, or ask us to highlight it for you, we certainly can.
I think, you know, the depression and the suicide slides, I mean, those were literally depressing to me. And like, when you think about the sheer numbers of kids, it was really hard. I think looking at our 12th graders, because it said 12th graders, so they would have been in 12th grade in 2022. Like, those numbers seem to be higher in everything. And, you know, you look at those kids who were at home for two years, and it really did not do them a service. And they really spent a lot of time in their bedrooms, on devices, on computers, social media, all of that. And that clearly has an effect on our kids.
They're a huge jump in the not feeling of sense of belonging.
Belonging, right.
And that one.
So to that point, could you bring up slide 18? I don't think we reviewed it, or I missed it.
Page 18.
And I'll have one more. Sorry about that. I didn't want to stop you while you're on a roll.
There was a lot to get through. Yeah. Oh, I'm not screen sharing, am I?
Which is a good thing.
As I page through all those. Okay, 18.
And can you just make it full?
Yeah, you got it.
So this was a little concerning to me, that sixth grade number, 14%, and the ninth, the 10th grade number. Are you, did you do it, you know? Because they're going up from before.
Yeah.
And that would contribute to not feeling, you know, belonging in school.
Yeah.
So I don't know whether the principals or the staff, particularly at the middle school, had any thoughts.
So I think I'll just grab that one. And this is something we're going to be talking about as administrative team. I shared with you all, because I got into it the other day with the Harvard's panel of folks, you know, nationally renowned folks talking about all of this. This is not just a Concord issue. Our numbers are very distressing, no question. But it's a national, international conversation, actually. And part of what they referenced were some of the tools that have existed for a long time, one being Harvard's relationship mapping, and it addresses just this, where the staff, Justin Cameron did this a few back, pre-COVID, and making sure that every child is listed and that an adult, a staff member can map and say, yes, I know that child well enough to say they might name me as their trusted adult. And the goal of that is to make sure that anyone who doesn't have a staff member who can name and identify at that level, that that become your priority group of kids to go connect with. So I think we're probably due for Harvard's, they call it relationship mapping, like I just said. And I'd love to see us doing that over the next short term here, because those numbers are bigger than they've been. Typically, that's been a strength for us. The numbers have shifted.
Cynthia, if you'll permit a follow-on, I wonder, Kristin, what experts speculate in terms of the correlation between students at great risk and students who intentionally don't seek out adult attention, therefore requires the adults to do the intervention, not students to ask.
Yeah, yeah. And as you see, I'm blanking on which slide number it was, but the coping mechanism slide, you saw that one of the coping mechanisms of the younger kid was more often reaching out to an adult, the sixth graders, the eighth graders. But actually, the ninth through 12th graders are less likely than their younger peers to reach out to an adult. I found that concerning as well.
Means, I think, the onus is on us.
Yep.
Which I think is that sort of goes into that whole mapping out the, talking, having everybody talk about the kids and make sure that there is, there's attention.
Correct.
And connections.
You know, there was a lot of encouragement out of that really renowned panel, which in some ways simplified what has to happen and becomes very hopeful, is that those strong relationships can be really, really game-changing for kids in building that culture of love and kindness and support, and start turning some of this around. So that's the positive.
I think before we leave this slide, I think it's interesting to note, you know, in light of like how we examine our budgets and everything from teacher pay to what we're allocating to students, I think the fact that we're all concerned about this slide, I think demonstrates to not just us, but I think should demonstrate to the community at large that I think the teaching profession in general has moved far beyond reading comprehension and long division. And if this is now what we're expecting of our teachers, I do think that's an important message to convey to the community at large. Because if we're distressed by this, I think it means that we expect this nebulous role that is not defined in the teacher contract to be a part of what they do. And I think that that's important to say out loud.
I'm going to say out loud, it's not even just the teachers. It's that cafeteria staff you just saw, it's the custodians, and it's everyone. Every adult in the building is part of the solution here. And often, the child who needs it most will gravitate, yes, to their teachers, for sure, but maybe to some other adult that they have daily interactions with. And I think the, we've heard that recently from the administrative assistants. So it's, it's the incredible value every adult brings to a school.
Yeah, and you know, two other points about that. One is that Lori said this is not only a Concord and Concord Carlisle problem. If you look on the Center for Disease Control website, they are calling it a mental health crisis for adolescents. And that's what is reflected in our And that's what is reflected in our numbers. Suicide ideation is up everywhere. There's not enough support for students everywhere. And the second point is just, you know, we do surveys of the students, particularly at the high school, about who, who is it that you feel close to? And the maybe surprising, wonderful thing is it's generally their extracurricular, like a sports coach or a, you know, math team leader or something like that. So it's, it's really those extracurricular where you're going to probably do it for your whole time at CC or, or much of it. And so that's a really ongoing relationship. And so many of our students are involved in those extracurricular. So that's where a lot of those good relationships are coming from.
And can I just ask, so you do actually ask the kids to name their trusted adults?
Not in the youth risk behavior survey, because this is anonymous, but we do in our health class surveys.
Yeah. And then can you go to slide twenty-three, which is bullying?
Thank you for saying you had two, because I didn't take it down. Yeah.
So again, with the sixth grade, the bullying number is is high. I mean, was it surprising to you all? No.
No. I mean, we saw increase in all kinds of sort of aggressive peer-to-peer behavior, as did every school across the country. After kids came home, you know, came back to school from being at home for several years, they, they literally didn't know how to behave at school, on the playground. And we were essentially teaching kids the behaviors that they needed to know sort of two years ago. So, you know, sixth graders were sort of acting more like fourth graders and so forth. So this one, I really expect to rebound pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think anecdotally, I would say we're feeling some rebound. The incidents coming off of playgrounds and some of the less structured settings are better. It's not back to pre-pandemic levels, but last year was incredibly acute.
Absolutely.
I have a question about a slide that's close to this one.
Yeah.
One about sexual harassment that looked like it was.
Do you know the number, the number of the slide?
It was just after bullying, I think.
Yes, side seventy-seven.
Exactly. So that one looks like it's almost a, you know, twofold increase. Or at least a fifty percent increase in, I guess, in sixth grades, three times for sexual harassment. Now, do you think, I mean, do you think that there is more incidence of sexual harassment? Is there more awareness of sexual harassment so people can give a name to it? And what do you think accounts for that, right? I mean, like two times in the high school and three times in sixth grade is, it's a lot.
I think it's both. We're definitely seeing more. It's the cyber stuff.
Okay.
Mostly in person, it's primarily the phones and the cyber, the social media. We are definitely seeing an uptick in reporting and we get access to actually what's kids are posting. And there definitely is an increase. I think kids are reporting more too, so the combination seems to be the, the good news is they're reporting more. The bad news is I think there's more posting going on and we're actually talking really actively right now about bringing in some parent programming, being more direct with kids earlier in the health curriculum. Like you cannot do and you cannot say these things, even in this anonymity of social media. It's not anonymous and it's not anonymous.
Yeah. And then I had a question about the, the social media use, the, you know, almost three hours a day.
Yeah.
And this is a complicated, I'm just, again, I'm just mulling things over in my head. And I'm trying to reconcile, right, like we have, I mean, do you we're, we're DM, we're trying to lighten homework loads and we're trying to push more homework time into the school day to give kids the space to get better, have better sleep hygiene, better health hygiene, better all of that kind of stuff, right? I mean, is there also a concern that this extra time is going to get consumed with more social media use? I'm not saying, and I'm not advocating for, oh, load on the homework so that they don't, so they stay off TikTok. But I, I but I, I wonder about that. And I do, I wonder, I couldn't tell from your slides and maybe on the, the bigger thing. It tells you what the historical, like, is the amount of social, because I see that there's the six, the people who do six hours or more, I think, was down. But I don't think that that's what we're talking about. I think we're talking about, oh, there it is, like. You couldn't tell where things were, where screen time was, you know, pre-pandemic from these slides.
Yeah, we really, our group teased this out much more. We had many more questions on electronic devices and social media, even certainly last year, but even three or four years ago, because it's become such an issue. And I, I want to distinguish between just having an electronic device in your bedroom, say, as opposed to being on social media, because those are two kind of different problems. The issue with social media is a comparison problem. So I'm on social media, everyone is posting what great things they're doing. You know, everything has faces, you know, with filters on them and everyone looks fantastic. So it's really, you know, comparing my life to what I'm perceiving of other people's lives. That's where the depression comes in. It's, it's not only that they're spending a lot of time on screens, it's what they're doing when they're on screens. So being on social media is more damaging than, say, like gaming.
Yeah, or having the TV on in the background while.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so if I wanted to say one thing to parents, I would say, get the devices out of bedroom when the kids are sleeping.
And what do you, what do you make of this, that you have ten percent fewer, you know, kids spending more than three hours on homework a night in the high school, right? It's not, I mean, I, I guess this is sort of the million dollar question that everybody's grappling with, right? Like, is, is that time less spent, like, would some of these numbers be even worse, right? Are we offsetting, are we offsetting the, the risky behaviors and all of that stuff? Like, are we, are we improving their, the mental health? And again, not advocating for like onerous hours, but, but ever, there's always been this talk of kids need to have more, more time at night and, you know, homework needs to be meaningful and all that, which is all great. But at the same time, we have increases in a bunch of these risky behaviors and.
Right, well, like that's something that I'm interested in, which I think is sort of the same thing. Like when you look at these, what we're talking about as risky behaviors, right? You can almost classify them into two types of risky behaviors, sort of social ones. I'm drinking, I'm making out with a guy or a girl, I'm smoking cigarettes with my friends. And then the sort of lonely risk behaviors, which are, you know, suicide, stress, depression. And what I see is, and Kristen, I don't know if this is, I know nobody likes causal studies anymore or whatever, but I am so curious in the inverse, as we see, you know, you, you mentioned, Christian, oh, we're really proud of the fact that no one's, you know, drinking and smoking and, you know, kissing.
They're decreased, yeah.
Those risk behaviors are going down as we see this inverse curve go up. And I have to wonder, like, you know, of course, if we're going to make gains in one, of course, you know, if you're not doing social things anymore, all of these, that means, to Sarah's point, are you alone in your room on social media, which then skyrockets all these other things? Whereas if you're out smoking and drinking and doing whatever, are you less likely to sit around and say, I'm depressed, I'm stressed, I'm lonely, I'm, and I don't know, but it does seem like there's an inverse, like a very clear inverse relationship, but I just don't know if anyone's studied it.
And you wonder in the, in the youth risk behavior, do they ever, do they track, like, to what extent kids are involved in sports or extracurricular activities? That's where so many of the kids are finding their passions, are finding their trusted adults, are finding all of that stuff, right? And we are liberating more afternoon time or, you know, time, like, to what extent can we bolster that? And, and maybe that's also where you're like, you know, if you can sort of track who is not engaged in something, right? Would probably be kids that are more apt to engage in these isolated risky behaviors, right? So to what extent can you guys sort of see, like, what, you know, who in this world is, is involved in a club, in clubs or sports? Or, you know, any of this, you know, the kids who are really exploring passions in a healthy way.
Yeah, we absolutely can see that. Yep. And it's usually somewhere around, it depends what you include, but it's usually in the seventies. If you include, you know, seventy percent, somewhere in that, like seventy-five. If you include all sports, theater, music, that's, you know, those are big draws as well and can give you a sense of belonging to a group and less of, I think, as Alexis said, a sense of isolation. So it's really the kids who aren't involved that are at most risk. So I think you're both absolutely right.
I had one last question too. I was looking at the, the stress. The, the slide about stress and it seems like they're aggregating. I am feeling some stress or what was the other one, or very high stress.
Yeah.
Ever a disaggregation of those, because I feel like some stress is actually quite healthy. I think having some stress about anything, whether it's, am I going to make the sports team or get the role in the play? Or, or, or get an A can, can be a motivating factor in a very healthy way. And I just wondered if, if there was any disaggregation of that to determine what, like, are, is there some healthy amount of stress rather than just this big block of stress bad?
Yeah, every question on the YRBS is disaggregated. So you can see the answers for each one. What you can't see always is the, and I think this was brought up earlier, you can't see the disaggregation always by subgroup because often we're talking about a handful of kids. So we, you know, it wouldn't report because it's it, it's, it would be giving away their identities.
And I think one piece that might be important for us as we look towards our mental health forum that school committee is going to host along with you. Might, maybe the, the parent education piece, because I do think, like I look at CCHS in particular, they have the caddies for the cell phones and all that. And it's actually been wonderful, like really uncomfortable for the kids at first, that, oh, my gosh, I had to put my phone in the caddy and I got to do this and that. And it's great that the school is doing that, but then these kids all come home and the wheels just come right off the bus, right? I mean, like the, the phones are, are next to them while they're doing their homework. And it's like, oh, I've spent ten hours doing homework. I'm like, well, have you spent ten hours doing homework? Or are you TikToking in the middle and you get the gaming on and you get the TV on and, you know, whatever else is happening? And I do think that there has to be some responsibility on the parent side too, as to like, this is what we're doing in school. This is what we see as really helping our kids focus more. Here are some ideas as to ways to do it at home. And then I, you know, and I think, but I've had teenagers in my house for over ten years and I'm still going strong and getting a little grayer. But it's changed so much, like there were filters on phones, like, oh, your alarm will go off if you're on your phone past nine o'clock and your wifi gets shut off. I mean, like my oldest kind of lived through that and that's gone away. And now it's just literally a free for all. So I do think that there has to be that parent side of it at home, because we can't expect the schools to be everything to every kid that's in the building. Like there has to be a partnership between parents and the schools.
And I will suggest that parents know that and are struggling too.
Yeah, it's, the struggle is real. I mean, it is real, so.
This may be a stupid question. It always references Concord Carlisle middle schoolers, sixth and eighth grade. And I'm just, I assume it is just the Concord kids, but I'm just making sure, is that Concord and Carlisle combined or is it just?
No, that's just Concord. So Carlisle receives their own results.
That I know, but it was just confused.
Yeah. Yeah.
Historical numbers of, you know, the transgender, non-binary.
Yeah.
Has that subset been included in the survey?
We have, I want to say, my earliest memory of having that as a question, it, it, it used to be like male, female. And then we added, I think there's like five categories now. And I think we definitely had it in 2016. I'm trying to think back further and I can't remember, but yeah. At least five years, I would say.
At, at what grade are those five introduced?
They're right from sixth grade.
Thank you.
Kristen, is there any, is there any thought around, I know that there's a pre-K to twenty-two, like task force or group, but I was wondering if there's a, if there's any, or it seemed like that on your list of resources or what we're doing from this data. I'm wondering if there is any talk about making that a broader initiative, like something where there's, to Tracy's point of like parent involvement, where there is kind of this like forced engagement about not just what's happening in schools, but also at home. Yeah, I just wonder if there would be a value in that.
Well, I, I, I would ask Court to speak to this as well, but I remember when I was coming on in 2012, the first reports of the stress level were coming out from the youth risk behavior survey. That was like the big year of the big jump and it was kind of headlines in the, in the local newspapers and so forth. At the same time, we also had had three students who died by suicide in the community. So there was a, a sort of task force with a lot of interested community members and groups that formed. And they put into place a lot of the structures that we have today. So we're really thankful about that. I think, you know, probably the biggest, well, my impression, the biggest is that we, you know, do this subscription so that, to Carisola, so that anyone who needs therapy can find it easily. And they've been great with like a 24-hour turnaround. So that was, that was a big, I would say of that. But I think right now there's also a group starting, I'm forgetting the name, Lori, you'll remind me, but a similar kind of group starting with the town as well. But Court, you were there, you were part of that, I know.
Well, it really originated right here at Ripley with a health coordinator who then became a principal. When the first YRBS came out, it was sort of shocking and we, frankly, nobody knew what to do with it because we didn't want the schools to roll it out alone, as if the schools alone owned the data and the, the follow-up responsibility. A community group got started that actually incorporated itself as a nonprofit, the Alliance for Teen Safety. And it had every youth-serving, youth-facing agency in town working under this one shared umbrella so that they could share resources and not compete for them. And it did its work over the course of a decade or so, and then it evolved and effectively hung up its hat after a while. We still had the corporate structure sitting in the mothball that was done by a previous town manager and I, so that if we wanted to resurrect it in a time of crisis, we could just turn a switch and do it. But Lori and others are still in contact with all of those players all the time. So de facto is still happening.
Right, and there's a formal effort right now going on. This is what Kristen's talking about with the Concord Health Director. She's working with the nurses we share with other communities now. And they're calling it the Concord Behavioral Health Collaborative. And we're at the table and what I'm taken by is the level of concern about adult mental health needs is just as high as kids. So that even drives a more urgent need for a community effort. They're doing mental health first aid training, that'll, they're just pushing out that information for May so community members can get engaged there. So I think you're going to see more and more collective efforts. I think our personal goal is just normalizing the conversation. We're watching the PA and others start to bring, bring presenters in. Certainly Thursday night, the high school's got some presenters on this topic and just, you know, anytime and every time we can talk about this, we need to keep talking about it. So it's, yes, the formal structures, all that amazing list Kristen puts together, which I'm overwhelmed by when I see it all in one place that we are doing all of that. And then just really drawing the conversation. are doing all of that. Um, and then just really drawing the conversation to a level of it's okay to talk about all this.
Yeah, I mean, I think that is such a key piece of it is, like, I think Kristen has an incredible list that you put up and
Thank you, yeah.
But how are we, how do we communicate that? How do families know about it? How do teachers know, you know, like, how do we make sure that it is not just something that you you're not reaching the point of, you know, suicide idolization before you even find out that there's these resources that are available?
Yeah, Carrie, it's a great point. I mean, I think probably the most um important thing we're doing right now is putting into place that MTSS work, because there absolutely are little tiny pink flags before you get to a crisis point and a big red flag. And the way that the screeners work um is that they're actually pro-social behaviors we're asking. I know how, I feel I know how to make a friend. I feel I know how to reach out for help, you know, that kind of um positively phrased. And so, but you're looking for those kids who are self-reporting that they actually don't have those skills and that they're, you know, and those are those are skills, they're fixable, they're teachable. Um, and we have some great professionals that can do that and that can make the difference, you know, catch this issue when it's a tiny stream instead of a roaring river.
And and that was one of the big, shall I say, philosophical debates uh when YRBS rolled out was how much of the focus would be on quote deficits and how much could we move to the pro-social uh and asset sort of model? Uh, knowing that this looks like deficits, but we can turn responses to an asset-based uh approach as well. I I wonder if I could make just a couple of comments. Um, one comment, couple of questions. The comment is, I I hope that uh we don't uh over-rely on electronic self-reporting. Um, because I worry about the misses um that could happen there, and I think our educators are sensitive to that. I, on a uh item that's not necessarily student-related, but certainly YRBS-related. Is this Emerson State Grant funded still, or do we all contribute as districts? How's it work now? I know we give a lot of in-kind support because this is our business.
Yeah, we 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 pay just a thousand dollars every administration, which far uh is far less than the actual cost, what it would normally cost. So this is really supported by Emerson. And they have been doing it for years.
And and finally, if we are uh offering a hundred percent more health instruction than some of our peer communities, how do we keep that up and how do we leverage that so that we start to differentiate ourselves from those peer communities? And that's sort of a rhetorical question. I don't think we need to.
All those curricula are under review right now for exactly that reason. If the time and structure is there, are we getting the most from that?
Yeah.
Instructional opportunity with kids.
Because we should, we should, we want to look different.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I mean, we can see the direct results. Generally with health education, you want to give kids the skills or the knowledge about two to three years before they actually are going to be in a situation where they need it. Um, so you know, for example, you know, puberty or sex education, you you want to do that when they're in fourth grade, fifth grade. Um, something like that um before they can become or feel surrounded by decision-making points. Um, so we've had a lot of good um outcomes with um teaching anti-smoking. You know, our rates dropped much faster than the the country's rates because of our anti-smoking health program within the public schools. Um, similar vaping, it was a really big problem. I would say six years ago, something like that. If you can remember, we had sensors everywhere and so forth. And um, and now it is much, much less so. So I think it shows one of the strengths of giving a a measurement like this is now we can see where to focus some of our time in health education. We need to spend more time on um positive brain health or mental health. How you take care of yourself, what are warning signs in your friends and so forth. Um, so that uh kids can have the knowledge before they actually need it.
I have a question about the timing of the, when, what, at what point in the year? And I'm asking this mostly because of, I'm thinking of seniors or juniors and, you know, in particular. At what, like, when in the ref- in relation to the college process and all of that is perfect given then?
Yeah, it's hilarious to watch that difference, even, you know, if you give it in January or you give it in March. The difference in the seniors is hilarious. And uh conversely, the juniors, you know, if the senior's stress goes down, the junior's stress is going up and so forth. Um, so we generally give it um in March. Um, and that's just an agreement with all the schools around us. We try to avoid, because we're giving it in sixth grade, eighth grade, and then ninth through twelve. We try to avoid those MCAS windows um in early, late March and and um all through, you know, April and May. So that takes out basically the spring. You can't give it in there. Um, and so yeah, the high school, as you all know, have midterm exams at the end of January. And then they're starting new classes in February, so we basically have to give it some time between um after February break and then, but before MCAS is in the end of Feb- in the end of March. So we kind of have a a window and that's everybody, all the school districts' window.
Just one comment on the trusted adult uh data. I'm wondering how we can use that to enhance how we're asking students to report incidents around racism and bias. Um, if we're asking them to trust the process, when really I think it's, we need more work around trusting the adults to enhance that process. So I wonder if we're using this data to enhance that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point. Thank you very much. Yeah, e- everyone involved in uh in that process and setting it up is aware, very aware of this data and holding it in. Yeah.
Yeah, it is a great point. None of the work we're doing happens in isolation, right? The DEIB work informs is reflected in all of this data. The academic success piece is directly related to all of this. If kids aren't available to learn, we're going to have a harder time showing, you know, rigor and excellence. So it's all connected. It's a great point.
So we have to make a deal. Next time I come to speak, can I come talk about something more uplifting than um, you know, risky behavior?
But it is important. I mean, this is, I think this is important for us to all really keep our eyes on. And I'm glad we're doing it and having, you know, we had a lengthy discussion about it, which really puts us in the forefront of what we are dealing with. And it is in fact a mental health crisis and it's not being dramatic by saying that at all. I mean, I think that we just have to look at our kids and know who's in front of us in our classrooms.
Yeah.
And our teachers too, I mean, because they were with those kids every day, so.
And the very fact that we uh introduced the survey informs kids about one of the things that's important to us.
For sure.
Well, thanks, Kristen.
Sure, thank you.
So much. We'll be seeing lots of you in the spring and all of your presentations. I'm sorry that you missed the food tonight and the but yeah, definitely feel better and
Thank you.
Drop off should you need to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, onto Dr. Hunter, Superintendent's Goals and Update.
Thank you. I, for the sake of time, there's a lot here and I'm gonna trust you'll find time to make your way through.
We've had it.
You've had it, so I'll just highlight a few things and then if you have questions, I can answer them. Um, mostly I was going to highlight things that we don't spend as much time talking about because there's a lot here that we do. Um, I think just in terms of special education, it's been a really important year this year and certainly Debbie will come back before the year is out. Um, you know, we're really honing in on finishing the continuum of programming, looking at the efficacy of our other more typical services. I pulled some data just to reference here. We're seeing, you know, we're all watching this, especially the early childhood uh data on early reading acquisition. That's where our biggest lag is coming out of the pandemic. Uh, but really encouraging to see in the January data, we're seeing fifty to seventy percent student growth percentiles, which fifty is a really solid number that they're closing gaps. So if all of our kids, and this was all of our kids, there actually aren't outliers there. Starting to really pick up pace that that's closing. I think when Kristen brings you the June data, you'll start to see, especially with the little little guys that were making some nice progress. So, and that's obviously super important. Um, special, I'll just highlight, you know, the leadership piece was a really important um decision-making collaborative effort this year to, you know, set the stage for the future years in sped. And between hiring Angel as permanent director and Val as assistant, I think we're setting up for success. And I'm glad to have those pieces in place. Uh, in terms of looking, just a highlight on student well-being, you've heard an awful lot here tonight, obviously, and Kristen did such a great job of outlining it. Uh, this is what this administrative team is spending a huge amount of time on in terms of then supporting teachers who are the front lines, as you've mentioned. So I think it's that piece. One thing I want to highlight in terms of professional development that we've, I think, are feeling really excited about. We finally, you know, using the faculty meetings for training that all all teachers are accessing. DEIB, special education, MTSS, which we're expanding, as Kristen said, to social emotional. The collective common conversation district-wide has certainly become more of an aggregate playing field. And it's not just the voluntary pieces. So for us, the structural component of that this year across that training component was really, really important and impactful, to say the least. So um in terms of switching gears a little to communication, I think we've made some great strides in looking at lots of multiple ways to communicate, highlighting emails, social media, copies, you know, we've named a lot of that. But I think just being incredibly accessible, I actually take the lack of people at copies as a sign. They do feel like they know what's going on. So sometimes it's a lack of feedback that gives you the most feedback. In terms of looking at student engagement and diverse needs under that goal, we did put together evaluation goals that many teachers have used. They were suggested goals district-wide, all about student engagement. And some of that to both increase uh, the the more engaged a child is in their learning, there's then not only higher academic performance, but likely more satisfaction and joy out of the learning. So really trying to look at our instructional strategies, and I think you're going to see pieces of this as the spring goes on. When the math department comes in and shows you the inquiry-based uh highly-engaged actives, learning that they've been using. Like in math, it's really hard to do that. And they've adopted this instructional pedagogy that is changing the entire district's approach to math instruction. So that's one example. Um, we worked really hard to revamp Rivers as the pandemic had had a pretty significant impact on that program that we're also proud of. So we're in great shape. The, with the day I pulled the data, that we had just about forty kids in both semesters next year. Really kudos to the teachers who are gonna take it on in the fall. They've, they took on a marketing campaign with the kids as the course enrollments were happening and really did an incredible amount of work. Um, and you know, face-to-face time, social media, like all of it to really promote the program and it mattered. So we're really excited to see that come back um with its full glory. Uh, I think then, just the other things I would highlight, DEI work that, you know, just in terms of my personal role in that. Really trying to be somewhat of a lighthouse on the messaging, you know, I think you heard Kalise and Kara when they were here. You can't say it too many times and seeing my role in that as being really, really critical. Um, I think I continue my work with MAS. We're excited, the Summer Institute. We've been selected to present two sessions of workshop, one on the literacy, the literature selection process for diverse texts um that Kristen's brought to you. And then Andrew and I will be presenting on the DEI strategic planning process. So we're definitely feeling still really engaged in the state-level discussion, which actually is an incredible support network at the same time. Uh, and then I think we've talked a lot about the middle school and strategic planning, so I'll leave those for now. Just see if you have any questions. There's a lot of links, so dive in purposely. There is things linked, so you could go another layer deep as you sort of made your way through.
Appreciate all the information.
Yeah, it was, you know, it felt good to put it all in one place and see that the work really does aggregate into the portfolio and we're going to bring you the metrics to show what it looks and feels like, but
Sort of related, but tangential and not for you, for everyone else. Um, I, as we use, you know, Lori's reporting on her goals, for example, for um, the basis for which we'll start to engage in her evaluation, every, everything is in the drive, has everyone accessed it appropriately? And gotten started and found it easy to use going once, twice.
Thank you for the reminder. I have not gotten started yet.
Um, just again, it's all in there. I don't know that it's like particularly friendly. So if you have complaints with the, like, the document itself, that I think in the, I advise everyone should make their own copy. You know, that they can keep in their own drive um of the, but you aren't allowed to like make a copy of the rubric and evaluation form. I haven't found a particularly technology-friendly way to do it personally. If anyone has one, I don't think that's deliberation. Feel free to share it.
We're ten days out and it goes to you and Sarah.
Me and Sarah.
Okay.
Ten days.
Yeah, what is, can you just remind us of the deadline?
Deadline is Friday, April seven.
Friday, April seventh.
Yes, and then that will give Sarah and I some time and we'll have to get together and figure it out, but yeah.
No stress.
No stress. And then you'll give us a date, because it will go on the agenda for, I believe, the
I think we have it on that.
We have it on it.
We have it on that table that I shared earlier.
If you guys ever get the date. It's it's slotted.
Okay, great. All right, thanks for the reminder. We all need that. Um, and I will turn over to Bob Conry for his update on E and D.
So uh, just to uh let you know where we are, we've had our E and D, our excess and deficiency approved by the Department of Labor Service, Division of Local Services of the Mass Department of Revenue. The uh figure it came in at was one million, six fifty-one, two eighty, which is four point five percent of our operating and capital budget for CCRSD. Um, you might recall, we had estimated about four point six percent uh back in the fall. The allowable cap is five percent, so we're a hundred and seventy-five thousand, approximately a hundred and seventy-six thousand below that. Um, we do have some small offsets in there that are temporary um that um will go away when we certify again next year. Um, just because of timing issues. These, this E and D amount also factors in that we've allocated three hundred thousand dollars in the FY twenty-three budget. So when you certify in FY twenty-two, if you've already committed funds to E and D, it counts that, you know, against your E and D number. So that's factored in. It does not factor in anything we're planning to do for FY twenty-four at this point. That's separate, that'll be for the FY, for the June thirty of two thousand twenty-three uh certification process. So that's where we are. It's not much different than we anticipated. Um, I just wanted to share that with you.
Were they a couple of months late this year?
Uh, once they get into tax um rate season, the municipalities take precedent over us. It was a little bit earlier than last year, um, a little bit later than we'd like, um, but we'll keep working on it. I think some of the things um timelines um have gotten a little bit better this year and we'll look to continue to improve that um with our submissions.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And you don't need anything from us at this point.
No, this is, this is determined by DLS. We
We can't refuse it.
No, we're just here to listen.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we have two votes on our agenda tonight. We have a vote to accept the CCHS benches for the class of nineteen seventy-eight. And I believe that you have a motion within the links of our agenda. Anyone would like to make that note? Do you have anything to add, Dr. Hunter, I should say?
No, I, the, the class of seventy-eight reached out to us, very excited um and really meaningful to them to leave a legacy here and we're grateful for their contribution.
And we have a rendering of that.
Yes, we worked hard, I didn't, but other people worked hard to pick the perfect bench.
Class of nineteen seventy-eight. And this is it, so thank you.
The next picture will have smiling students.
Yes, exactly.
So would anyone like to make the motion?
Sure. I moved that the Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to accept a donation of two benches from the CCHS class of nineteen seventy-eight to be placed in a location to be determined.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All right. Thank you to the class of seventy-eight. Any further special? Thank you, the the students will love it. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, and our second vote is on, I am going to ask you, Dr. Hunter, to talk just for a second on this one, um, the donation.
Yeah, so as the homeless shelter opened and we started to work with the families directly, uh, it became clear that having a little incidental money available to us, as very small needs came up, the MOC is very well supplied over there. And as you know, the Mock is very well supplied over there and as you know, the community just did this enormous drive. So we're talking very small needs, but little incidentals. That having some petty cash essentially would be useful. And I can't say enough, I didn't ask for an amount, I thought they were gonna offer me like a hundred dollars, they offered me a thousand. So Community Chest has donated this check so that we can draw from that, which should last us a good long time and we're just really grateful for the immediate response.
All right, yes, very, Community Chests. And a motion on that?
I move that Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to accept a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from Concord Carlisle Community Chest. To support the families at the Best Western.
I just have a question, this is only for the region or is this cat, like where?
It's both.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should probably vote at both now that you.
So I'll, I'll withdraw that motion and move that the Concord Public School, the Concord. Public School Committee and the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to accept a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from the Concord Carlisle Community Chest. To support the families at the Best Western.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have a second?
Again.
Any further discussion?
With our very sincere thanks, to have a little bit of unrestricted money for unknown needs is pretty fortunate.
Yeah, very.
Probably.
We're all very fortunate, thank you.
Great, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And with that, I would like to adjourn the Concord Carlisle School Committee. And might I suggest just a five-minute break?
Please, I, yes.
Okay, so if you can mute us for five minutes, we'll be back.
I guess we're, we're still in session, so.
All right.
So we'd start off with the easy stuff. I think Dr. Hunter just wanted to share some updates about what's been happening. On the middle school project, nothing particularly exciting, but nonetheless. No, really, the only activity to report, the bids are out, so we did host. I don't know how many vendors were there, contractors and subcontractors last week at Sanborn. Yes, they come to Sanborn even though we're demolishing it. They have a chance to have questions answered, they were able to see a couple of spots in the building that may have some things we'll salvage, but. It was a good turnout, so I think there's a lot of interest in the project and we'll look forward to the bids coming back in a few weeks.
Is it April twenty eighth?
They're due in the twenty-first, I'm not sure exactly the turnaround time when they'll be available to everyone, but we know. Timing of town meeting is an important piece of that, too.
All right.
Have some questions about the timing for town meeting, so have we predicted how we're going to move or not move that article? How does that all work?
What, what article?
A field school.
Oh, I think it will depend on the bids.
Right, but those don't come in until the Friday before town meeting?
No, they come in nine days before town meeting.
When are they become public?
So, uh, there's some details to work out here, I think the bids are in the twenty-first, what I'm not clear, the. Middle school building committees do to see them on the twenty-seventh, which might be the day before, assuming you post the packet and such, so. I'm unclear if there's some reconciliation and work like that to be done early on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, if they'd actually be available then or not. So you could meet before town meeting and make that decision, like on Sunday afternoon. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, because we'd have to meet anyway.
We have to do that, we've done that in the past, I think, meet before.
This is a, this is a little more meaty topic, but sure, you know, it's a little confusing. So I just want to be sure, are we gonna have a handout or something at town meeting?
I think you make a good point, if we can get a few days, put, put a placeholder in now. Or we might be doing better decision-making. Because, because as you say, we don't know what's gonna happen.
I know, it's the worst.
So to give us twenty minutes before town meeting. May, may compromise our capacity to adjust it and move.
Would not recommend meeting before the building committee meets because that would probably inform. The Thursday. It's Thursday, we could do it Thursday afternoon or Friday morning.
That's what I think would be.
Yeah, I think that's wise. Why don't I do a little informal polling of the five of us to see what time might work and we'll pop it out.
Can I just ask a question, but as of right, right this second, when everything is out, we're moving the article. When the bids come in, we're either, we're gonna withdraw it if the bids are under a certain amount. So do we need any discussion about that? I mean, we would just withdraw, right, like.
No, I'm thinking we're gonna move it, though I think we need to really, I don't think we've, because we don't know. Right, isn't something that we've really tried to socialize with the town voters? But what's really going on with this, because I do think there's some confusion about it.
Yeah, sure, there very well could be, yeah, I mean, I think. But, but so, so that, that to me is like a different concern, that's not gonna be like something we'd rectify.
We have a public meeting.
Oh, sure.
Meeting on campus, it will not be televised.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, 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 great, yeah, perfect.
I just, Tracy, I think you're right, and Cynthia, I think you're right, we need time to anticipate and manage questions about. Who knows, CPC or all the things that people are gonna bring up conceivably.
I just think it'd be, yeah, great, more open.
Great. Noted.
And here's hoping, good news if we had.
Yes.
My interest.
Yeah.
Because the word on the street is, the contractors are trying to fill up their twenty twenty-four schedule.
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully.
Good. All right.
Are the, I, I looked at the website that we maintain for the building project, do we have? I believe we do, all the Hill documents that they have distributed.
Yes.
One that we have, have really not discussed at all is the security implications at the building. Even though we know we have consultants on the job.
Yeah.
How that's been called out in terms of requirements and situations is something that I think is gonna have to be. Publicly known at some point.
It came up today, we had a.
That we can share.
Yeah, we had a community question come in through the police chief and.
Okay.
So that led me to reach out to S M M A and they're gonna put a bit of documentation together.
That was not the reason I mentioned it.
Yeah, and, and unfortunately, the inquiry from the community member was because of the tragedy yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think you're right, we need to have a little bit at our fingertips to, to, to share. All good on CMS? Okay.
So, yeah.
Very exciting.
Okay, so items B and C on our discussion, I'm gonna sort of propose we. Sort of do under a larger umbrella and I thought I'd start just for the record. To talk about what's been happening in the last couple of weeks. Since we've met, the finance committee had their meeting to discuss Article seventeen, which is our. CPS budget. It was, I think, almost everyone in this room was in attendance, so I won't go into too much detail, but. It was an extremely long exhaustive meeting, it went late into the evening and I, I won't editorialize beyond that. They took two votes in that evening, one was a vote to. Recommend affirmative action in favor of our recommended budget at a four point seven increase. That vote split even seven to seven, as we all know, that when you cannot achieve a majority, the vote fails. Then a second vote was proposed to vote. To recommend affirmative action on the finance committee's proposed guideline, which was three point three percent. That vote advanced eight to six, so. That leaves us going into town meeting as of this evening, not in alignment with the finance committee. Which is, you know, certainly there's precedent for it, it's, you know, not the apocalypse. It's certainly not the outcome we hoped for, but it is where we are, so. In addition to that, there has been what I will editorialize as a lot of talk about. A more dire financial situation for the town. That has been talked about a lot in the finance committee meeting, so, you know, where I think. Where I think what we need to talk about is our position sort of on our, on our two articles, the Article nineteen. And then I forget the number of our capital budget, but our capital budget and if. If there is anything that we can do in light of. Sort of the larger climate, and I think I would entertain from all of you guys some discussion on that. And I'd first like to talk about it from the CPS budget. Then I did want Lori and Bob to have an opportunity to talk about the capital plan after we sort of get through the budget, but. I think they may end up somewhat related, or I don't want to exclude discussion from one in the discussion of the other, if that makes sense, but. I do want to focus primarily first on our operating budget Article nineteen and sort of try to get people's thoughts on it.
It is, we are where we are.
If, if I knew a way to bring in recommendations, if I knew enough about the budget. To bring in recommendations to help bring us closer to the FinCom Sustainable Growth Guideline, I, I would certainly do so. I don't think the school committee is involved in, in developing the zero-based budget, I didn't watch it get made. And don't know enough about it. I, I do know that there are contingency monies, but I don't know the extent of them, I know there's a listed forty thousand. And I know there's other contingency monies elsewhere that aren't called out as such. But I think the community has heard a pretty clear message, and that is that. Touching the original recommendation is gonna endanger kids. So I would echo what Cynthia said, we are where we are.
Anyone else?
No, I think we, I do think we are where we are, I voted in support of the budget at four point seven and I still maintain that's where, that's where I'm at. I don't have much else to add beyond that, I am not in favor of going to the reductions list and cutting things out of our budget. I think that we've been given a level service budget, we're just looking for a level service and we have to recognize that. Were there FTEs that were added in? Yes, but they were added in because we needed those to service students. So I think that, you know, to touch any of that, it is gonna touch kids. And so I'm not, I'm still fully in support of the four point seven percent budget.
You bring up FTEs, so I'll give you a pointed question. This year, absent line items to enable it, we added close to seven positions. Did we do the same next year?
That's not so much a financial, oh, do we have the capacity to do it next year?
Yeah, no, I mean, we had the capacity this year and it wasn't in the budget.
Right, right, we, we, we have ESTR two funds, we had sped ARPA funds, we had release valves to, to, to cover some of those things.
Hiring last summer was focused on closing gaps there, too.
Right, so the only thing that's left as a relief valve is the forty thousand contingency. ESTR three is some element of small amount of budget relieving for the summer school, we have a little bit there. But it's not much. I want to say twenty thousand. And then, to the extent that we have retirements. It would be a contingency except for the fact that we haven't had a district placement, it's occurred since we budgeted, that we already know we need to absorb. So. You know, does it, I, I don't have the exact dollars of what that is, but, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that. It would at least substantially offset the out-of-district placement. So I think the danger is when we look at getting to guideline. If we look at it one way in terms of what can we do to, to find places to save, we also have to look at the flip side, which is what are our risks? And, and one of them is a budget, an out-of-district placement, one definite and one potential. And then the second risk is that we don't end up with the state solving homeless shelter costs. We hope that we get a reimbursement in the same year, because then it's just a wash. Yeah.
Know about.
Right, right, so I feel like, you know, there, there, there were some safety nets this year, it, it's still a challenging year this year. But those safety nets aren't really there for next year and. I think the one position that was added was really kind of. Missing infrastructure position at the high school, it's not added at CPS, the, the dean of students position is the only thing that we have. We've talked about finding a way, you know, we have that on our agenda to find a way to offset it. So I do feel like part of what happened here, too, is we've, we've gotten to a place where we have a full. Fuller, I'd say. Lori could say it better than I do, but I feel like we have a fuller build-out of our special ed programs in-house. And, and we're not, we don't have any missing programs, types of programs that are left are so specialized that it wouldn't make sense to build a program for one or one student.
We plugged the holes in the, in the sequencing.
Yeah.
So.
And that takes time. Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to talk a little more on this year's budget, having been part of last spring and how we got to guideline. You know, we had, we, I'm gonna say Jared and I had very, very lengthy conversations when we got to guy. When we came to you and said we could get to guideline, that we knew the reserves were there if we were gonna need them. We knew, we had some hiring to do this in the summer where we could try to come in lower, late retirements that we could try to trade. And come in lower. And I think what happened is we, in the transition, you know, he left me the list of where the money. Could be, a lot of it one time, because it's ESER, it's circuit breaker, it's that sort of stuff. And we ended up using most of those relief valves, unfortunately, so. I think some of this year's four point seven, it's a perfect storm if you're doing some catch-up from those now needing to get. Established in the budget, you don't have a couple hundred, three hundred thousand coming in from savings by returning kids to the district. There's only fifteen of them now and, and then all the other cost pressures of inflation and the fourteen percent sped tuition. And all these other random increases that sort of hit us, so in some ways, we're watching other districts not be able to come in at. Under five percent because all those pressure points hit together, so.
Could we handle two or three out-of-district placements next year?
I mean, I'm nervous about that, I think. Wait, wait, sorry, what did you ask? Could we handle two or three out-of-district placements?
New ones.
The budgets are living things, right, so what we say tonight might change tomorrow, because some other thing's gonna happen, a teacher resigns or whatever. We will have to handle it, there'll have to be ebbs and flows somewhere else to make that happen. Am I sure if I can, am I gonna have to look at staffing to make that happen? You'd always hope you're not trading out of districts for staffing and.
You're the one that knows the answer to that.
As of right this minute, the answer is yes, we can handle it, but we're gonna go to supplies and other things like that, PD. We'd go to things that aren't staff.
Got it, okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Well, and I think that's a challenge every year, you could have a move-in tomorrow where you, you know, everyone's worst-case scenario. If you had a set of triplets that all needed to go out of district, you immediately have three out-of-district placements.
Right.
And.
I have a question about that, though, my understanding, mass law is that a move-in, the old district, if they're in-state pays their out-of-district.
Only if it's after April first for this year.
Okay, okay, so if they move in. Summer move-in, I'm talking, that's, that's the case, right?
It's only April first to June thirty.
Thirty. So if someone moves in over the summer.
Every set's out in July first.
Okay, okay.
Too bad.
During the school year.
During the school.
During the school year, they would pay out, but we get a move-in over the summer.
The, the intent of the law is if you're so late in the fiscal year that it would be hard to absorb a two hundred thousand dollar.
It is so late.
Right.
It's impossible to absorb it.
It's always hard, but it doesn't make sense. April and June, your budget's pretty well spent, established, the, the thought is the preceding district had it budgeted.
They had it budgeted and you're in your fourth quarter.
Right.
They should have it budgeted in FY twenty-four.
They probably do, but that's.
That doesn't make sense.
But there are kids when they move in.
No, no, I just, I, I'd like, I'll personally go back and look, because I, I know you know, but just the way, everything I've read makes it sound like. Not to the next fiscal year.
That's not my understanding.
That is accurate.
Does it make sense, though?
Yeah, I guess I, my, this, the meeting this evening with both the, the update on the Best Western, with a possible three hundred thousand dollars or two hundred and thirty thousand dollars across the two regions, for the Best Western, which could potentially be reimbursed, but we don't know when or how. It's money that we have to pay out at some point. Plus, you add on the relatively sobering, extremely sobering picture that Kristen painted, about the mental health status of many of our sixth to twelfth graders. I just don't think, I think a four point seven percent budget is more than reasonable in my mind. I feel like everything that I've heard over the last six months, and we've been talking about this, and learning and hearing from Bob and the community and everything, is that I'm, I'm even more, I'm, I'm, I, I, like you, Court, have been asking the questions of, to myself, to, I feel like the administration, these meetings, how can we bring the number down? But I, I don't, I don't see how we can do that without hurting kids, and that's, that's where I am. So I'm, I feel even more confident in the, the, the number four point seven today than I did even yesterday.
Yeah, so to that end, I don't know if this is a decent segue. Like, I, I feel similarly in that, all that is in the operating budget is, things that address immediate needs of the students that are in our buildings. I think it is a far greater challenge, given the environment that we're in with, with students, number one, and, and then forget the inflationary pressures secondarily, to have the flexibility needed to reduce the operating budget. Personally, as I segue into the second part of our discussion, I don't quite feel that way about the capital plan. And I think, and I know, I, I'm fully cognizant of the way that the tax impact affects residents, and that it is not the same, and one is dead, and one is, and one is not. But what's interesting to me is, when I listen to the Finance Committee, they often conflate the two. They say the financial picture is because of both the operating expenses in the town and the schools and the debt. So to me, if we're going to conflate it to advance one narrative, we should conflate it for our narrative too, or not for our narrative, but in our discussion. So if the debt plus the operating budgets are contributing jointly to this problem, I think wherever we can be fiscally prudent, we should take a look at it. So, again, that's my perspective. And in having that perspective, I asked Lori and Bob to reexamine the capital plan, to see if the flexibility and restraint and the ability to talk about the concept of needs versus wants could be realized there. I think it was Dee in our joint meeting in this room that talked a lot about this philosophical concept of needs versus wants. I don't think, I don't think there's much in the operating budget that's, not to be, I don't mean this to sound upsetting, but there's nothing particularly exciting in there. It like is a level service budget, we're delivering the same program. It's not like we're adding all this fantastic innovative stuff this year. So given that, there, I don't perceive that budget as having something that's chock-full of wants, where I think we could maybe have some discussion, and especially because the impact to the students seems farther away, is potentially in the capital plan. So if you guys want to talk about what you've done there, so we can introduce it into this discussion, unless anyone wants to talk more on the operating budget. Happy to continue to do that as well, but.
I guess my one question on the operating budget is, is, as, at what point are we going to take a vote to go to town meeting? They just, do you know what I mean? Like.
We'd have to take another one, because as of right now, the, our vote is in it to advance our article as written, well, not as written sadly, because it's written so darn early. But to advance our article inclusive of the one hundred and fifty thousand in reductions that we voted for at our last meeting. So if we were to do anything different than that, we would have to take some kind of vote.
Because we have not voted on that one hundred and fifty.
We did.
We did, but we voted on them.
We've, no, we voted it, we voted it.
We took the vote right before the, the Finance Committee hearing.
Okay, okay. And then, okay, and then the Finance Committee met. So is there value in, in voting again on the, where we are, or versus, do you have FinCom's guidelines?
Unless, unless we were to change what we were doing, I feel like our vote would, our existing vote would stand, which, again, I don't have the math in front of me. But as of today, there, the vote passed in favor of Article seventeen as written less than one fifty. If we were going to change that, we would have to vote. We'd have to have another vote.
And is there value in voting for the FinCom guideline?
Only if you want to achieve it.
We could, we, we could see, could certainly propose it.
This is Matt Johnson, the Select Board liaison to the School Committee. I just thought that I should also note that at our March twentieth meeting, the Select Board also voted on the CPS budget, and the vote was three to one at the guideline amount, the Finance Committee guideline amount.
Thanks, Matt. So I mean, certainly we can do that, we can, if we can marinate on that thought, we can hear from Lori and Bob about the capital plan and see what we feel about that, and then go back to this larger umbrella discussion.
I, I would be careful about working one operating budget and one capital budget, as if they're supposed to connect.
Oh, no, I don't think they should.
At the end of the day, a tax bill is a tax bill, so they will have connected. But our deliberations, I think, should be in.
Sure, but I think, again, I think they've been conflated in other spots.
Do so.
Right. And, 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 but I do think, the only reason I'm sort of saying, well, yeah, so I mean, again, so, I don't know. I, I think, I think, again, what I'm trying to propose is if there is desire here for some more prudent examination, what we might examine both. And I get, I get what you're saying, but I think we do need to examine both.
Here's the flaw in letting anybody conflate them. And that is, it suggests that we're not zero-based in the least with our capital planning, that we are engineering capital planning to send a message to people who are dealing with our operating budget. I think our, our, our capital plan has to stand as a capital plan.
I mean, I, I.
Do you want me to talk through what we did, because that might inform the discussion you're having? So at your ask, we went back and looked at the capital plan, and I think also looked at where we were in the process, and the feedback we've been hearing, especially about the Ripley project, to do the heat pumps here over the preschool. And I, those were not unreasonable things people were asking us, including all of you, even though the vote was to support it. You know, the cost was very high for the electrical infrastructure, based off a Green Communities grant that two years ago was far less, under a hun, two hundred thousand dollars, and led us down a path of unknowns, which is why the cost kept going up. So I think we learned a lot. I learned a lot. I'll speak for myself, Bob wasn't here, sort of on the more recent end of the story. I think I learned a lot. I think the facilities team learned a lot. And I think in just looking at where we were, coming off the Alcott study, where we're like, oh, now there's other options, is this the best use of that kind of money here at Ripley, or are there other better options now? So I think I'm going to jump to my master list here. What I did for my own sake to some extent, but then decided it was a really great communication tool, was to put together all the sustainability efforts, because that's what the Ripley project is about, sustainability. Doesn't fix the fact we have nineteen sixty vintage boilers here. Those have to stay online, because it doesn't take care of the whole building. So to me, it really is an environmental project, more than a fix the need of boilers that are aged. And I think that's where we were with Alcott last year was, there, we thought, we took a recommendation from a report a couple of years prior, trying to lower emissions on a boiler that still had life in it. That got brought up for question, and then we went to the study, and now we realize there's other options we didn't really understand back then. So I think the challenge I'm seeing, and I tried to name it in the memo, is this tension that exists with the sustainability efforts between cost, meeting the town's goals, which I think we're all in agreement, we believe in, and the evol, evolution of the options that changes so quickly. So I think that's where my takeaway was, I just want to slow down and pull back and work on a master-level view of all of this. And I think it needs to be not just a school discussion, because the price tags are so big in some cases. So coming to that conclusion and not really having a readiness for what would necessarily be next, because if we're going to do a, a big-picture view of it, where do we start? We have options, I, I would name that, but where do we start strategically? And with a, with a master plan on how we're going to accomplish sustainability goals versus keeping buildings heated and such needs and wants started, I guess, to borrow your words, and those weren't the words I was using when I did it, but some of that ask in my head. So coming at the capital plan with that lens, I asked Bob and that team to pull back and really whittle down, and we only looked at FY twenty-four, because it's too much in a couple of days to do the rest. What were the drivering, you know, more maintenance, well-being, and safety needs versus sustainability pieces, or things that had that kind of connection? So I think Bob can talk you through what's in the FY twenty-four proposal. Because of that mindset, we, we did lower the number. So do you want him to scoot through the list? That'd be great.
Yeah, just to kind of echo what Dr. Hunter said. I think our first plan was, we felt, I'd say, some are compelled to see the Ripley project through to completion in our first pass, because we had done the, the studies, we had design docs, and, you know, as we got the feedback, we, and then we saw the dollars on the Alcott study in a different vision. Didn't look as, like as good an option. So what we, what we focused on was to, we also, I thought, needed to step back a bit too, and say, we have three elementary buildings that are, are getting to the age where things start to break or need to be replaced. So the existing conditions report is basically an assessment, assessment of your, of your buildings, all the subcomponents, the exterior, the roof, the mechanical systems. And it will give us a capital plan roadmap for ten years and beyond, with dollars associated with all the things that we need to prioritize, that'll also highlight where there's any critical needs. So I've, I've done this in a different district, I know a lot of people have done it, I think it's been done here as well. We don't need to do it for the middle school, assuming that things go well. It'll be a new building. We don't need to do it for the high school, it's the region as anyways. And, and Ripley will, will think about whether or not that fits in here. If we did, then we'd have to figure out how to allocate that cost across two districts. So that's what the existing conditions report is, and, and that will be a holistic view of all of our capital needs. It won't be just sustainability, it'll be everything. The BMS systems. Yeah.
Can we go, questions?
You asked the way to the end?
Or now, or at the end? How do you want to do it?
If you want to ask about that project, you can ask about, sure.
When, when you've done that before, has there been a estimation, estimate or a projection as to the intended life of the, of buildings?
They factor that into when the repairs were, were done. We can also just design in our spec what we want them to tell us, and how we want them to tell us.
I think the spec is critical.
Yeah, yep.
End of life, you know, long range, I think, is something that everybody can understand, even though planning, it can only work five and ten years out.
Right.
We've still got a, a sunset for every building.
Right, right.
Or a guesstimate.
And there might be buckets, it might not be, you know, one, two, three, four, five. It might be one to three, three to five, because, you know, you might try to stretch something out a year, or some things might break before they're anticipated. So that would be the idea.
In some communities, you'd actually be taking a school offline or putting a new school online. I think with our elementaries, looking at as far as I can see, that's probably not the case.
Right, okay.
Yes, so these are three schools that are, I mean, they're, and they're not that far apart in age, and they're at a time when I think it makes sense to do it. Because we could uncover something that we'd say, well, maybe we need to prioritize that. And there's another example in here, I'll talk about that later.
Why wouldn't we focus our first study on Ripley? To me, that is the facility that needs the most attention. And we have to decide what, how we're going to deal with this over the next ten years. And the other question is, currently, we have, how many rooms are the Concord Children's Center rooms?
Three.
And what do we expect to happen with those next?
The town is, the town has oversight of those rooms.
Those are three double classrooms with.
Yeah, so that, that, the town has full purview of that.
So I think what I'm saying is, I think we've got a complex facility. And I really don't think Carlisle should have anything to do with a capital investment in a Concord building. You know, they should pay operating costs, but they shouldn't be paying.
They've only contributed the little bits we've done here at the central office, we haven't asked them to do more. Yeah, we agree.
Right. So this is more of a town issue, especially if we're going to have town use of this facility. So I think we need to work together, you know, with the town, and figure out how we're going to, so I think we need to do this, of this.
Yeah, I think it should be included in the.
Sure.
In the hundred.
Well, you know what, when we, let's just say that you were to approve everything here. We do have the flexibility, I understand, to allocate between, so, so maybe we would defer, defer one of the parking lot items. The BMS systems upgrade, that is the building management system. And we had a failure of a network. Actually, I'm not going to do the acronym, it's basically the brains of the, of the bus, building management system, I think it's a controller, that failed at Willard, and so when that happened, we had them look at Thoreau and Alcott, and we got guidance that we were looking at close to end of life there as well, and you could wait for it to fail, or you could replace it. We feel like it's important to do that now. That's.
So this is not software updates, this is server and hardware replacements?
It's, it's a component within the building management system.
I'm just curious, what component? Is it the soft component or the hard component? It's a lot of money for a soft component.
Yeah, no, it's.
That split between two, two schools?
It's two schools.
Nonetheless, these are often.
It was twenty-five thousand at Willard, so.
Software updates are usually embedded right in a contract, so I'm just curious what this is.
It's the whole system, we would need Russ to.
Yeah.
Align it further.
That'd be helpful.
To manage, like, heating.
Yeah, yeah.
So those are eligible for Green Community Grants, what I've been seeing.
We, we.
If it's going to save you money.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that.
Yeah.
So I, I don't.
You can't wait for it to fail and wait, and then find a grant, that's, I think, why we're bringing it up, because we'll have an opportunity to be proactive, where it, the one at Willard had failed, so we had to just fix it.
Fix it, yeah.
And I don't, I don't dispute the need to have good systems, because we are so digitally dependent on our building ops right now. I think, A, knowing more about it, B, looking at grants and getting going on that, being proactive on that, couldn't, couldn't hurt us. At least know what's possible.
So I'll, I'll keep going through the list, I can certainly forward the, the information I have from Russ and, and get more as needed. The next set of items were, and these are, you're going to see across all three schools, we felt like if we're going to look at sidewalk and parking lot repairs, you saw some in future years in our capital plan, we felt like we should try to do this at the same time across the schools that needed it, to get better pricing. Now, these are estimates on what, what the cost would be, our actual cost could be a little bit more, a little bit less. And our scope, you can can be determined. Partially through, you know, being informed by some of the. Existing conditions data. So the parking lot repairs are at Alcott, Thoreau. Sidewalk repairs also at Alcott and then walkway and parking lot at Willard. So they're purposely kind of lumped together in the same year so we can bid them all at the same time.
It makes sense, the economy of scale. The town has recently adopted a rating system for this stuff. We anticipate bringing in the town so that we conform with their rating system.
We've worked with the engineer at on the high school project, we so we have a relationship with that person, so we would certainly be in touch with them. To leverage their expertise.
Got a ranking way to evaluate each lot.
Okay.
He used it for the roads. That's what I heard him use it for was the road.
Because the roads, not parking lots.
This is, we're almost a month out from town meeting, and I would like to see the data for the town to evaluate all sidewalks and parking lots at our schools. But I don't want to rush it. So if this has to go a year later, I don't think that's necessarily. We put them all together in FY twenty five.
I think they should be bundled, but I think. There will be constituents that we that we have to hear, listen to. Who will expect us to see this? Get some DBW attention simply because they're going gangbusters on asphalt and concrete all around town.
And I think they're deferring some of their paving of parking lots because it is. Kerry has one in the budget, but it's something like almost three hundred K. So I I'm afraid that these expenses are going to be a lot higher than we expect. So I just think we need to get numbers before we vote there, to me, very low numbers.
You think these numbers are low numbers?
Yes.
Well, I guess I'm not an expert at parking lots or or asphalt or anything like that, but I think overall. You know, we're looking at like if we look at the big picture of this is lowering our capital ask is what we're doing, right? I mean, this is just the big picture is we're substituting this out for what our initial ask was.
I would disagree. That's not what I'm doing. I'm not, I'm not here to lower an ask. I'm here to determine what we need.
Yeah.
I think those are fundamentally different. I I I'm I'm not pursuing.
I think I'm doing both. Right, I I think I'm 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 looking at it both ways as we're trying to meet. We've been asked by the finance committee to look at our capital project because I think that they think that it's too costly. Are the middle school is definitely factoring into this. That's been very clear at every meeting that I've attended. That part of part of this kind of ask, and I'm going to go back to our operating budget. I'm kind of all over the place, sorry. But I'll go back to our operating budget and the reason that the guideline wants to be lowered, the middle school just keeps on coming into that discussion. Now our capital project is coming into the discussion. So this to me represents an effort to lower our ask number one, and let's look at what our facilities people and what. Bob and Lori are suggesting for items and we either trust the numbers or we don't. And so. As I said, I'm not an expert on this, so I do trust these numbers. Are they exact? Probably not. You know, they all of these are projections. We're not putting anything out to bid yet. So so that's just where I see this, and I think we need to focus a little bit on what's our goal here.
Can I ask a quick question? One, is it customary that there would be evaluation from? Town employees of the like vetting our projects? Is that customary?
It's it's been something we've done on occasion when there's been a beneficial need. I'm. I'm confident Russ and his team can evaluate parking lots. I've heard Alan's ranking. I don't think it's. That hard. I would rather get in a proactive mode on some of this. I mean, the high school road, you know how horrible condition that's in and it's really years too late to have done it. You know, if i- if we're going to ask to spend time on all the evaluation, we're not going to get that done before town. So either there's an ask. That we want to work on these projects because it's the ones we feel. Are the priority, given that we're suggesting we're only going to bring forward. Things that maintain safety and operations at the schools and not try to epitomize sustainability. I think at some point there needs to be. And I think the hundred thousand dollars is what's going to drive this is to put to paper. Projects that people have confidence in, and I'm struggling with how else to do that because this is now. Second year in a row, second version of this year's plan and a lot of. You know, kind of in fire Joe mode all the time here because and then that makes it even harder to bring the necessary information. So I'm just feeling a little stuck, I guess.
And 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 one thing that I, so there's sort of two things when I think of this. The first, I think. You're talking about kind of this cycle that we've gotten into where. In trying to be responsive to the town's overall sustainability goals. And in some level of partnership with them. Several projects have been identified and let's talk about the Alcott boiler and the Ripley heat pumps. In so doing, a couple of things have happened. One, when you, you know, in in the case of the Alcott boiler. You know, in light of the new sort of. Fiscal mindset, you're now we have people saying, oh, this is kind of a want, not a need. We've got, you've got a decade left in these boilers, replacing them now is is a want. We want to be fiscally sustainable. I understand and respect that argument. Also, I think, you know, we in in taking the green communities grant for two hundred thousand. It necessitated a million dollars in spending. Again, we want to take the grant. But, you know, at at what at what cost? I also, so and then so that we have that cycle compounded with the fact that. And this goes back to the Alcott boiler too, that by the time we can implement. The technology has evolved, gotten better. So then we get in these cycles that say not only, oh, it's kind of like a want, not a need. That's sort of like the the people who have an eye towards the fiscal impacts. Then concurrently, you have people on the other end of the spectrum wing and saying, oh, but the technology is advanced. We shouldn't do this anyway. So I recognize that that is not the ideal cycle to be in. So I think that's sort of part one where I am, where I agree with you, like. Something here isn't working because it's not as linear and as we want. And then I think the second thing, which I think Tracy's trying to talk about is. You know, do we have an opportunity here to show some, you know, fiscal discipline? And and you're saying if if you change your lens to talking about whatever you said, safety and operations. Yes, we can have some, there is an opportunity for fiscal discipline. So that's sort of how I see this. I think those are both positive things. And again, like you, I'm. Fairly confident in Russ's assessment and his capacity as a professional to evaluate this. And make his recommendations accordingly. So that's sort of the three step process where I'm at. So I mean, I I don't personally see a need for anyone else to come in, you know, why is Russ not?
So I I do disagree with you. We we should not, we don't have a DPW at the Concord Public Schools. We're a department of. We don't have a Department of Public Works, the Concord Public Works in the in our department. We are a department of the town. And we should use these professional resources who have many strategies to mitigate. Declining parking and paving. They don't always repave everything. Do they have all kinds of tricks and things they've been using lately to? Prolong the life of of a of a resource. And I really do think it's. In our best interest and the town's best interest to utilize that resource and it's. You know, I don't expect somebody here to to have that DPW expertise.
It might even be a good look for us.
Yeah.
No, these aren't costs of repaving these spaces either. These are, these are repairs. They're estimates of repairs.
I I just would like to have like a little more information and I don't think we'll be ready for town meeting. So that's what I'm saying, you know.
So are you suggesting we don't, we don't advance a capital article for town meeting?
Well, I think we could.
Working our way through it.
Yeah, working our way through it.
You know, I do want to clarify, we work very closely with many of the town departments. I'm not resistant to that. I just don't know how to do that in a month's time. I'm not sure. I'm not sure I want to give up the money because I haven't, we haven't had a chance to do that. I think they can come over and help us figure out how to best spend the money that's allocated. So I guess that's what I'm questioning.
Maybe that's where I'm kind of headed because I I think it would be. In everybody's best interest that we came to together to work on this. The other thing is. Bob LaLusher said that he's totally opposed to these small bonds. And I how do we get ourselves out of that?
That's a town question.
Yeah, that's a town question.
We we didn't do that in our last town, but it's not our decision.
It's not our decision.
We just.
I think what you're asking is how do we manage the? The disagreement.
Right, because.
Well, Bob's point is.
It's a worthy question.
You're paying, they're they're paying debt service, so they're not using as much of their budget to pay for capital. When you switch to using it free cash or or using it, you 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 have a tax effect to people, so that transition has to be decided by the town.
I've just had some other side. Closed door conversations that I don't feel like I should share, but I think that's a an opinion at the town level. I don't know that it's a. Agreed upon opinion.
It was his opinion.
Yes, it's Bob's opinion.
I I wonder if I could. Introduce a big question, which is a little bit out of order, but really germane to all of this. If one of the stated goals is to reduce the ask, if another one is to have an ask, save the money, as you say. If we have a Alcott report that seemed to be pretty compelling. And if seven hundred and forty five was on top of three hundred, was on top of a hundred green communities grant. How do we explain how it's completely disappeared here? Why didn't?
So boilers aren't at the end of life. They got a decade left.
We, that was a very pointed question.
Yes, at Alcott.
Yeah.
At Alcott.
From finance committing it along. I mean, we were asked to say, how old are the boilers at Alcott and why, you know, boilers are supposed to last?
What's our, what's our timeline for that? Because that's a half million dollars.
Alcott?
The the study we just got from Weston and Samson.
Yeah, that's going to have to be part of beyond FY twenty five as we.
Right.
Look at the longer term again.
But it's big.
Yeah.
It eats up a big chunk of.
Correct, yeah.
Pathetical nine hundred, okay.
And I hope an intent was to 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 put forward items we felt could be supported without controversy. And. And then to table things that would require for the discussion.
Okay.
I will point out one item that. The the in Thoreau, the dry fire suppression system in the nineteen ninety four wing. So we had a fire. Now we've had a sprinkler burst. We need to do something.
For the same problem.
Long term there. It's hard to get somebody to provide an estimate. You need to have drawings in some cases, so that's the engineering part, and then you're going to have a bid. So when we build a capital plan. It is challenging to. To get the exact figures, so it is. Now, these are our, these are our best estimates, and this is Russ's best, Russ's best estimate. The the existing conditions assessments will give us estimates with the work that they recommend to us, so that will be helpful. So again, our thought was, I mean, I don't know if we want to walk through all the items here. Some of these are are repeat items that you've seen before. But our intent was to try to advance something that was not controversial. We certainly could consult with. With Alan. I met with him before.
Yeah, we we do that regularly.
That's good.
And if we got feedback that he he felt like something, you know, I don't know if Russ and him already had this conversation, but if we got feedback that said this and yet. There's a less expensive way to do it, then we'll we'll do that and we'll preserve the capital and we'll have it available for a different purpose. Or we'll have it available to cover something else here that might go over. And when we have these existing conditions reports, it makes it easier next year to have a little bit more of a clear roadmap. For the next five years and beyond.
So when you looked at this list, you you referenced non controversial items. So these are all for maintenance, repair that is. Russ's best estimate of what needs to get done.
Right, most of it was on the five year plan. We just accelerated it to twenty four. The only thing that wasn't, I think, is the existing conditions report. The Thoreau roof repair.
And the BMS was that one.
And the system upgrade because the Willard failure was very recent.
Yeah, Thoreau was.
Thor loading dock went up from thirty to seventy five.
We didn't have integrated playground.
An additional serve.
We did add that now based on what we were able to do with the fifty thousand. We had this past capital plan. There's a bigger need there. We knew it was only a portion of the plan. So you're right, we added that as.
We've had prior year twenty five and fifty, right? Twenty five, two years ago.
You landed it, it got pulled out the first time it was in the Thoreau, so it landed at fifty last year, and then we had the PTG's money to come.
Which was sixty.
Some.
We have a a project. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty big amount of money. Do we have a, is there a design or a plan?
What's interesting to me about that one is it's it's now at a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. But it follows, excuse me, it it presumably is simultaneous with the master plan. Or do you see the master plan occurring before the that magnitude of playground work?
Yeah, and I think just, you know, the the accessible playground business. Like we have out here, this playground here costs three hundred thousand dollars seven years ago. So it's super expensive.
Park is done, but that's all rubberized now. I mean, it's.
So this would be like phase two of the integrated playground. Phase one was built. We actually had a bigger design than we couldn't afford. I guess that's the short way of saying it.
So in the future, I think we should be much more forward thinking and getting CPC funds. If we do any other playground or recreation work.
Start now.
Because that's what they got CPC funds to do a lot of the integrated preschool playground.
Some of it, yeah.
And.
Yeah, we might.
Children's center playground.
And there might be opportunity to.
Yeah, we're not.
Again, to continue to integrate that and. Lower the capital or add to the scope or.
Sure.
Yeah.
Can we come back to the fire suppression?
Yes.
Question I have, and I think others might too, is we've we've had first the fire, then we've had the water. We've effectively rebuilt or rehabilitated it twice, thankfully with insurance. Presumably both times we got a fire department reporter analysis. This. Item suggests to me that there's still something that is very unique about that wing of one building that requires something so very special. Yeah, what did we do wrong where?
Design, it's a design.
Two repairs, we're back where we started.
So it's the attic is just wide open over those classrooms. There's some insulation over the the dropped ceiling. But above that, it's just completely wide open. So it's it's subject to the elements outside. It was a hundred degrees the day the fire happened because those heaters. Caught fire, the one did, which ironically are there so that the pipes don't freeze on a negative ten day. The good news is the heaters are upgraded now so that we'll never catch fire again, but that wide open airspace, the freezing cold just. Got to it. It's gonna keep, it's gonna be just as subject to all of it if we don't do something different. So the heaters have been addressed. That won't happen again. Now the open pipes. It's actually stunning. The pipes haven't frozen before now because.
It's I won't say it's tragic, but it's it's pretty sad that we're heating a vacant space. That's crazy.
And the insurance company, as as much is said, it's their job to return it to its previous condition.
Right.
So.
We did that once.
So we wanted to repair it, but we we want to do more than that, and we're not going to turn away the money to fix up the room, but. So right now it's a wet system, which means the water, the the sprinklers system remains filled with water. In that area, the the dry system would kind of keep it back. At some central point and call for it when it's needed if there's a change. And I I think it's the heat going to a certain level. So that would mean that there'd be no water in the pipe to freeze in the classroom that's near the edge of the building. But we need a design and, you know, I don't know, they might, there might be a different option, which isn't, you know, maybe there's some insulation, but I, the the thought was that this was. The best solution. Part, the rest of the building is a dry system. I'm not sure why this wing is different.
It's the, it's what happens when you renovate.
Yeah.
You have the original structure still there, so.
All of our other elementaries are dry?
Well, the rest of Thoreau is, I I would.
That's interesting.
Because of the renovation. Because of the renovation, I think that this is the old wing.
Yeah.
Right, but other elementaries have a dry system, not a wet system. But I don't know.
I don't know if we know that off the top.
I can check on that if it's wet.
Far more reversed into these days.
If it's wet, I think they have adequate insulation.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, how do we see?
Yeah, so I mean.
We need, we need a warrant article when? In a week? When, when, so when is the moderator?
Uh, you know, we did an article for we would amend.
Thousand.
We can change it up any way we want, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
I think it's April fourteenth is the date. Who, um, like that date that everybody goes over the articles?
We can talk to Carmen and let her know we're working.
So, I mean, that's a completely different, uh, except for the number, the, the content of it is.
Yeah, cause I do think this is something that we're gonna need to vote on sooner rather than later.
I think last night she was referring to the mailing that goes out. That's.
Right, and then there's.
That doesn't determine.
And then there's stuff that, um, if you want to include, to your point, um, like handouts, they need to be approved soon.
She'll recommend a handout on this, yeah.
Yeah, it should.
Okay.
So we have two boards and committees that haven't taken extended.
Time wise, yeah.
Two boards and committees that haven't taken a position on this.
Yeah, uh, sure, yeah. And, but, well.
Voting yet, so.
No. So, I mean, again, I, if, if, if someone wants to put a motion on the floor, I'm gonna entertain it. I don't think that's appropriate.
I, I, I have one more question about Ripley, and that is, uh. Uh, would it be in everybody's best interest to have a conversation with the town about the town's, uh, intended use of the pods out front? Uh, about, uh, the, what Mr. Parker referred to earlier tonight. Um, doing the, the basic, uh, air sealing and, uh, insulation of that before significant new monies went in there. Um, uh, apparently, uh, the calculations that he saw suggests that, uh, the. The systems are about twice what would be required if were that to be properly sealed with good window treatment. So would that be something that?
Sure, but I don't think we need to do that for the purposes of this plan, cause it's not included in it.
Well, that's what I'm asking is, would, would, would it be appropriate to be included as a first Ripley step? The, the basics on sealing the building before we start to replace infrastructure.
Well, I guess kind of where I'm at is, I, I'm still going back to our professionals who are making recommendations to us as a committee on this building. And I understand that there's a lot of interest in the Ripley boiler and the Alcott boiler from the community, but I do think that we have to look at our.
But I wasn't talking about the boiler.
She's talking about the.
The heat pumps, heat pumps, sorry.
I wasn't talking about the heat pumps.
We're talking about.
You're talking about doing additional insulation.
It's still a Ripley project.
Has not even been, been banned.
What I would do in my own home before I spent significant new boiler money, I first button up the doors and the windows. I think most of these people would, and I think most public facilities would, and I'm asking, is that something we should consider and discuss with the town? And in fact, I'll go further and say, I recommend we do so.
Well, okay, interesting. I have, uh, shocking, a different perspective, which is. Um, to me. When I look at the way other towns and municipalities are addressing sustainability, they are, they're not at the school committee level. So for example, when we talk to all of our school committee peers, um, in our roundtable, we asked about this quite a bit. And everyone's answer was unanimously the same, absolutely not, we can't afford it. And I think, you know, you look at different municipalities, most people, or not most, some people who are on the forefront of this. Have big townwide master plans, so what I would hope we could pivot to. Um, would be a situation where we might one day accept a grant from. Something that the town of Concord applies for. They have a sustainability director, and we might accept it like an ad fund grant. And, you know, we're gonna give XYZ amount of money for XYZ project. And it's gonna pay for the entirety of it, because I am concerned that. You know, when I listen to members of the finance committee and, and the select board and the way they're talking. If these are not insignificant amounts of money, and to me. Our priority needs to be. The education and safety of kids.
Great.
And if, and if, and if we're, and again, I go back to, uh, Deortner's needs and wants conversation. If we are entering a phase in our tenure here as, as, as school committee members, representatives. Where we are being asked very pointedly to focus on needs and not wants. I believe the sustainability stuff needs to firmly come out and into that wants category. And we need to be able to show the fiscal discipline required to be able to focus on what is our purpose here. In this building. And that's my opinion.
But I think you and I might be saying the same thing. I think this is a town issue.
That is great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need to work with the town and figure out how we solve these problems that we have in front of us.
That's great.
You know, that's, I, I agree, and it's all coming out of the same pot, you know, at the end.
Yes, except that that's not how it's perceived in the community. You know, so, and I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that it, it is delineated. Cause there is, there is a macro narrative out there coming from our boards and committees. That the schools are, are, are hoarding the resources, the financial resources in the town. And I, I think it's important to start correcting that narrative and to start demonstrating. Hey, okay, you don't, we don't need to gobble the resources. I don't need to put some two million dollar boiler in here, or, you know, whatever. I think that is, it's important for us to start, to start showing that, and, and I would like to push those expenses elsewhere. And yeah, of course, we can designate a liaison, whether it's Russ or Lori or whoever, to work together, but. It just, and part of why I put that big list together is, uh, uh, most, many of the projects that have now circled back or been stymied. Were town recommendations out of the reports they supported for upgrading and going to sustainable projects. So that collaboration's been there. I think there's a, and I, we will continue to be there. We work, we thrive off of working with them. They're helping, you know, bid the high school project. So it's really about a master plan of town, what are we doing when and how are we gonna pay for it? Is what I think is next, cause I think the one-offs of, let's do this at Alcott, let's do this, it really, like, it's, it's not working, right?
We all agree.
So I, I feel pretty strongly right now. I just wanna step back and like, who wants to come to the table to have this conversation at a town level?
Yeah.
Because the schools can't do it alone.
Creating fifty-year sustainability.
Yeah.
Funds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right.
Right.
To, and, or doing three-year bonds, right, with the three years of blah, 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 blah. And they might go through it all or they might not, you know, so.
Yeah.
Um, but that's gotta be a community decision.
Yeah.
Not saying, well, it's, it's the town's needs versus the school needs. This is all.
Yes, I like that positioning, yeah, that's.
That's why I think.
Yes, agreed.
Planning, so we're not, you know, and I think like for FinCom presentations, we should all be coming with capital together. Not Carrie presenting her and ours, you know, then, cause it, it's confusing, like, why, we're a department of the town. When we have a regional capital plan, that's a whole different conversation. But we can't borrow money.
Right.
You know, we're not a municipality. We are part of the town of Concord. So I just think, you know, I think it would, it would us to do much tighter planning so that we can kind of walk together and.
Yeah, that, that's why I am supportive of Bob's. I, I know that. Plan is expensive, a hundred thousand dollars, and I, yeah, but I, I think it's well worth having that roadmap. So that we can be responsible as we move forward. I think that's like, maybe the best thing on this. In some regards, because, um, I do think there is also, interestingly, you're talking about things that, um. At the elementary schools starting to reach their end of life, and I, I think that also needs to be, um, better. Messaged to, to the community.
Conversation about, do we want to maintain them for fifty years, or is there seventy years possible? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I think when people see us potentially spend a hundred thousand dollars with a analysis. That has some pretty, uh, robust specs to it, and it's headlined with intended, uh, shelf life of these schools. People are gonna understand the magnitude of our needs, because they're gonna see, uh, not a lot of, uh, one-offs. Um, uh, and reactive, uh, instead, they're gonna see that, uh, uh, things were, were on, on, on a map. Even though the timing might move over the course of.
Because of many factors, right? Availability.
The needs are known. The exact when and the exact severity unknown, but, but the likely needs, uh, we, we're not unique.
No.
We're, we're, we're New England facilities.
I thought there, there was, at the presentation a couple of weeks ago about the Alcott boiler, there were, there was one thing that stood out to me, which was that there are other school districts looking at these same. Things, and none of them are going through with it because of the cost, the price tag. And, and to me, that was, like, I, I landed in the same place as you, Cynthia, which was, this really needs to be moved to a broader conversation. And I don't think that it necessarily means that, that we wouldn't spend capital money, like, that's designated to the schools on the sustainability efforts. But as part of something, like, as part of a bigger plan, so, like, X percent of this year's budget will go towards the town's sustainability efforts. As it pertains to school projects or whatever, whatever it is, but I don't think it, I just don't, I don't want it to come across as though we're just trying to, like. Punt the cost of it to the town. It's more of just having a more strategic and thoughtful plan.
And it might not be that the school building is the least efficient building. It might be that you do the study and it's the townhouse, or it's, you know, so you, you basically, if you have it.
Where do you start?
On a macro level, you can rank which ones are the least efficient, and you could, you know, maybe it would be picked to be a school one year, um, and.
It's always been Sandmore.
But I do think the undue burden on the schools, when I look at these amounts, they're significant. They're not fifty thousand dollars to close the deal to get the.
Sidewalks, right? It's like.
Um, these are significant, yeah.
Carrie is borrowing four million this year, right? Something like that.
I don't remember.
I don't know.
Top of my head.
Yeah, so, you know, we're, we're just not part of this cap, larger capital conversation. I just don't feel like we are.
Yeah, well, because we, yeah.
We're not gonna be able, the one other thing I thought was a good observation is this nine hundred thousand dollar number was meant to, uh, bubble gum and tape. Old schools. This is probably twenty, a really old number, and it's, it's not caught up with maintaining.
A good point.
New school, yeah. Right.
That's a very good point. Like, wha- what if, we're gonna find something on here. The year that we need a new roof is not gonna be nine hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah, it's all the more reason to have that plan.
Yeah.
So that we can ascertain.
I know nobody wants to move small capital investment into our operating budget, but, you know, if we explain it correctly, right? Why we're doing it, and just have large capital as a separate line on, to be borrowed. So that's just, these are some things I think we need to discuss.
We could leverage it into an argument for those larger expenditures when they come along.
Yeah, and I think those are longer-term discussions, so I would recommend that we take time to sit with this. And we, I know that we're gonna have a tight, tight meeting in Boston, but.
Well, I was gonna suggest. That we just add this item to the meeting on the twelfth.
That's what I would suggest.
On the twelfth.
There's an exec session.
An exec session on the twelfth.
I love that suggestion.
And some information can come to.
Just a CPS meeting, yeah, yeah.
In a traditional forum, like a reporter, a memo, or a table, or this or that, it doesn't all have to be presentation-driven.
No, not at all.
And that is at four thirty, that four, four o'clock hour?
But it was via Zoom.
That's okay. We can do this on Zoom. It's just the five of us and you guys.
Yeah, that's okay. That's, that's, it's allowable, otherwise, I think it's fine.
Yeah, okay. So prepare to, prepare yourselves to vote on this capital plan then.
On April twelfth.
Both a public meeting and executive session.
Yep.
Yes.
So we'll revise those agendas, Baron.
If you asked me, you, you, you had mentioned putting Ripley in the existing conditions reports, so are we able to edit these amounts then?
I think these are very live amounts. I think they're all in play as we.
Yeah, sure. I mean, cause you're right, cause we're gonna iterate. Yeah, you can iterate this based on.
Doesn't need to be tonight.
Yes.
Don't know, thousand covered four buildings.
Yeah. I think you should absolutely show us what that, if it goes up a little.
And then when you're talking, can I just dig into that a little more? Is it, obviously, it's, it's beyond what we did at Alcott.
Yes, it's everything.
Can you send, you sent me the one you did in your last.
Can you just clarify what Alcott was, what you're referring to? Sorry.
Send it to Alexa.
Boiler, oh, with the boiler.
I'll, I'll send it to you, Alex, or to you.
Send it to.
Okay.
Cause with that include, how many of our schools are in sewer? Just.
Anybody know?
Anybody, no.
No.
Willard. Willard? I'm not sure.
Willard, no.
Thero might be.
I think Willard's.
Thero is.
No, it is septic, that has to be.
I think Thero is.
Septic, we replaced the tank.
Oh, don't bring that story up. That's not a good story.
Not a good one.
Just raised that right out of my head.
Bad at large numbers, but here.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it. See what it looks like.
And then, I guess before we conclude the evening, is, I mean, going back to the budget. I don't know. Is there?
If there was, you would have heard it.
I'm sorry?
If we had ideas, you would have heard them by now.
Right, wow.
I think Cynthia said it at the outset, we are where we are. Somebody's got something specific to, to bring to us.
Yep.
Well, we put that on the agenda for the twelfth as well. If there.
Put it on if you need a placeholder.
Yeah, we can.
It doesn't hurt.
It doesn't hurt, yeah. Doesn't hurt. Nobody can fault us if we.
Yeah.
Have late-breaking news.
Well, I also think that with the FinCom select board. Having conversations, taking votes, that I think it is, I think, I do think that we should vote again, that we should stay where we are.
Are you suggesting we do it now or on the twelfth?
We can't. We don't have a, we don't have a vote on our agenda.
Well, we could, we don't have to have on the agenda to take a vote.
Well, entertain a motion, but.
I would, I would consider that unwish.
Unless you're gonna change the number, which you are not, right?
Uh, well, I don't, I don't, I, well, I don't know. Um, all right, well, let's put something on for next week, on the twelfth.
On the twelfth.
Unless the superintendent is recommending a new number, which I think she would have told us.
You would have heard that, but I don't.
Is your, is your point to have it voted and supported? Is that your point? Or to, is there a different number?
No, not necessarily. Well, I think, I guess there's two, two thoughts. One is, in my, a lot, a lot of activity in the town has happened. But both the select board level, at the community level, just people weighing in at all of these meetings, and then also at the finance committee. Finance committee and select board have both taken votes on it first, and then second, I, I think, um. We haven't, like, we've discussed it, we've talked about it, but I, I think that there is value in, in saying, we've heard all of this, and this is. We've talked about it, but we haven't actually voted on it, and votes change. We have the ability to, information can change our minds.
That would work for me if we were deciding to accept the recommendation of.
Men something.
We, there's nothing on the table.
Yeah.
Absolutely nothing on the table.
What do you mean on the table? Like, from FinCom? Like, they're not saying.
So I mean, so we, so, so I guess, Carrie, like, if you were gonna suggest something, you could suggest. Or if any, or, I, someone would need to suggest a, a change, whether that's, okay, let's, let's add back the hundred and fifteen. You know, let's go to five point oh one, or, or do we look at FinCom guideline, or do we look at somewhere in between? I think someone would have to make a proposed.
Otherwise, or.
Suggestion, otherwise, we have a, was an established vote.
That, one thing that isn't, that I've been thinking about is that FinCom voted both for our guideline. Or our requested budget first, and then second, they voted for their own guideline. And I'm curious if there's value in us taking those same, those same votes. Like, on what is our, what is our vote on the FinCom? Like, if we're, if we were to say we.
We accept the.
We accept the guideline, and we'll go back to the superintendent and say.
I would have moved to, uh, 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 send the superintendent back for budget revisions to bring us closer to the guideline. If I thought, A, there'd be a second, B, if I thought the vote would prevail, and C, if I thought Lori, uh, could, could and would do that. And the answer is no to all three of those.
I could get to guideline and not shave surfaces. I would have.
So, so, so I think what I hear you, I'm gonna say it my way. A revote would simply be adding an exclamation point to our earlier, uh, uh, budget recommendation. Instead of saying we move, it's we enthusiastically move by virtue of a second vote. Well, that's kind of. It's lost on the decision-makers in town. They're too smart for that. They, they know that the, there is tension around. Uh, the fiscal health of the town because of the spending needs of the various departments and entities. And these, uh, tension-filled. And these uh tension-filled and divided votes kind of speak to where the entire town is. But you and I know what's gonna happen at town meeting, and that is our budget's gonna prevail. And some people are gonna be happy and some people are gonna be unhappy and others are gonna be agnostic and others aren't even gonna show up, unfortunately. Like, you know, I, I think we are where we are. We, we've got our budget and it's four point seven.
Well, all right.
I found that two-vote thing they did very confusing.
It was very confusing.
That would be my.
Yeah.
Well, I, I know. I saw that. I watched. I, it, it added to the confusion of.
Where, what are we voting for? What are we voting on? Yeah.
Well, they had trouble knowing what they were voting on.
I saw.
Virtual happen.
Yeah, yeah, it was awful.
Everyone knows nothing good after eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
Take ten.
Take ten, come on, on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, the piece of wisdom Dr. Under.
That wasn't as intentional as it seemed.
It wasn't meant to.
Made my point, I guess.